Email from Nicole Jones, supporting the fire bars. She just sent it to me.
Yeah, that one's quite, that one made me-
No, I just, she's sending me an email right now. No, because we have a lot of emails, I just thought I'd let you know. She just sent it now, but I can't print, I can't print it from here.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to orders. Jared, will you please read the role?
Uh, yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilwoman Fasenelli. Councilman Mills? Councilwoman Paulie?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett?
President.
Marys.
Here, thank you so much. Today, I'd like to ask former mayor and former council member, Mr. Bill McAloney, if he'd lead us in the pledge, please.
Good morning, happy to be here.
Thank you.
...............................................................
Thank you, Bill. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask all of those in the audience to please silence your cell phones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to speak on an item contained on the agenda, please approach the podium at the time the item is being considered. After I recognize you, state your name and address for the record prior to providing your comments. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes in most cases. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please do so during the oral period listed for oral communications. Or I should say, please do so during the period listed for oral communications. Our first presentation tonight is an update from the Orange County Human Relations Commission. Will Dr. Ahuja please step up to the podium? I don't see him. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the next item. The next item is going to be an update from the Villa Park Community Services Foundation. Looks like we have Mr. Doug Bender. Give us an update.
Thank you, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, I'm gonna try to do this in about ninety seconds.
Okay.
Eight items, ten seconds, but don't, don't put a watch on me. Uh, well, first and foremost, as usual, we want to just thank the city council for all of its continuing support for the work that we do. It's really important, we can't get along without you, we can't get along without the community, so we thank everyone. Uh, the foundation, as most of you may know, has been recently continuing to build its talent pool, its gene pool, if you will, uh, just to bring more talent and more skills to the work that we do. And of course, that latest addition, I don't think we've actually officially announced this out loud to a crowd of folks before, but just want to make sure that we, we officially, make sure that we acknowledge the fact that Kay Rogers is our newest member. And Kay brings some really, really great skills to the work that we do. She's been very active, as some of you, maybe most of you know, in helping us with the 50th anniversary celebration. We're just really, really pleased to have her as a part of our team. Uh, also, in continuing our efforts to be more efficient in the way in which we get things done and more effective, we decided in the last couple of months to also establish a grants committee that actually now will be a bit more structured and a bit more deliberate and effective in the way in which we go about not just receiving grants, but also evaluating those grants for consideration. Uh, grant requests will now be reviewed, reviewed for approval in the months of May, August, and November for the remainder of this year. So every quarter, we're gonna be looking at grants, in case anybody's interested. Um, also, just want to quickly recognize Carol Stone, who recently, uh, did a stellar job of putting on our very first volunteer recognition program for the city of Villa Park. Uh, there's at least one person who's really, really thankful that that went off really, really well. One surprise person. Uh, also, we want to acknowledge the work that Jill Koolai continues to do prolifically as she's updating our website and giving that a new look, also continuing to add new information to, also adding new information to our, our website that's, uh, of great interest, we think, to the rest of the community. So we want to, we want to thank Jill for that, and we're continuing to find new and creative ways and ideas for helping to get the word out to the community about the things that we're trying to do, um, for everybody. We also want to take the oppo, this opportunity to encourage everyone to please remember our annual Family Days picnic, uh, for 2013, which is coming up Memorial Day weekend. Um, if you don't have anything planned or scheduled right now, put this in your calendar. It's going to be great. We've got a great group of, of, of folks who are trying their hardest to make sure that we have another great year of family fun. Uh, next, we did a pretty good job a couple of years ago, almost two years ago now, of rolling out the introduction of, of a very interesting geranium about town. And, uh, we just want you to know that we're still working diligently to come up with the second round of sales for those geraniums. We would love to see more of them around our beautiful city. So film at eleven on that. And then finally, but not least, um, given the success of our concert in the park on last year, when everybody came out and had a really great, great time, I don't know, some people may have seen me dance, maybe they didn't, but, um, giving, given the, the fact that that was such a big success, we are currently pursuing the idea again this year for sometime in the month of August. So stay tuned for, for more interesting news about that. And, uh, thank you, and here's to Villa Park.
Very good, thank you, Doug. Can you hold on one second? First off, uh, we are so proud of the foundation. You guys do a wonderful job, and the city benefits from your guys' help, your volunteers, and I want to let you know, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know tonight, coming up toward the end of our agenda, we have an item that Councilwoman Fasenelli wanted to bring up to, about the foundation, and I'm wondering if you wouldn't mind just staying there, we could move that item up. I know there's quite a few folks from the foundation here, is that okay with you?
Absolutely, we'd love it.
Uh, Councilwoman Fasenelli, would that be okay with you?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Um, everything good on that, guys? All right, so item sixteen is Councilwoman Fasenelli. Please.
Okay, well, you didn't mention, but I should let everybody know that Mr. Hunter, who is the chair of the foundation, um, today resigned. Um, he sent us a nice letter this morning and said he did not want to serve the rest of his term out, and he's going to miss the board, but he wants to spend a little more time with his family, he doesn't want to have to worry about if he's going to be in town for his monthly meeting, and he knows he's gonna miss it, um, but he's been doing it ten years now. And so, um, we accept his resignation, and I know that he'll be missed. We asked him to stay on the board at large, but he said he's just looking forward to not calendaring the foundation meeting once a month, so I thought I'd let you know that. What has occurred since, in the last few months, is that I started to ask a few questions of the foundation, so I can get a better understanding as to what its purpose was. And it wasn't because I was questioning what its purpose was, but it's been ten years, and we had such a large year last year, we spent a lot of money, we, um, did a lot of different things, and it was time to recoup a little bit. So throughout the meetings, there were items being mentioned, such as, um, the staff, city staff, helping the foundation at certain events, such as Halloween Fest, uh, the, um, boat parade, items such as that, and people, the residents, were asking, who pays for that? The answer was, the foundation pays for half of the overtime that our city staff works. So when I went to inquire whether or not the foundation had paid it, that's when we found out that there was one item that they weren't paying for, and that was the Halloween Fest. Wasn't a large item, it's not a big dollar amount, it was just some, it was an oversight. And so, that led, what that led, oversight led to at that point was a conversation. Did you know that you weren't paying for half of the city staff's time? The response was, the city didn't bill us, and the ans, that was correct, the city did not bill the foundation, the foundation couldn't pay it. So it was an oversight, and it was one that I wanted to bring to council, I wanted to bring it to the public, 'cause we've been saying all along that the foundation was paying for all of these events, and it wasn't. So, not by anybody's fault, but from now on, the city knows that it needs to bill the foundation for any of the events that they've agreed to pay for. Um, we're not asking for the city to bill them for any back events, but we just want to make sure from this time forward that that occurs. One of the other items that came up is that, maybe it was a misunderstanding, but we've been told that the foundation had given fifteen thousand dollars to the city for a second sign, one of the entrance signs. And when I went to the minutes to see where it had been approved, I found out that it had not been approved by the foundation. Nowhere in the minutes for the year had a vote been taken on that dollar amount to be given to the city. It had been discussed that they would support the signs, but there was nowhere in there where I could say, "You want to write us a check." That, again, could be an oversight. So I brought that to the attention of the city manager after I read the minute book, and at that point, but he brought it to the attention of the treasurer, who said, "Yes, that's correct, it is not in there, they cannot write a check." And at the next meeting, the foundation will take that issue up and will vote upon it, and the city at that point can request the funds. But I wanted to make sure that the public knew, as well as the council knew, that that money had not been dedicated to the city yet. It had been discussed, and I'm sure everyone thought it had been done, but it wasn't done in the minutes. So I call it a little housekeeping, um, the foundation's been doing very, very well, and we just need to tighten up on our controls, um, as far as the city is concerned. We're gonna look at it a little bit finer, just to make sure and assist, if anyone needs any assistance, we're here to help, but we just want to tighten up on our financial controls and make sure that everything is, is proper at that point.
Great. Any council member comments on that, Greg?
Yes, and that's basically to keep, make sure we're, we're very clean with the nonprofit status, correct?
That's correct.
Any other council member comments? Rick?
I'd just like to say that Bob Hunter is gonna be sorely missed, and, and I, I really appreciate, I, you know, I wasn't around for a lot of that or involved, but I've seen what he does, the time he spends, and, uh, you know, really appreciated all the effort and all the years he put into it, and he will, he will be missed, he's a great guy. And I also want to, uh, say that, uh, nothing here is, was intended as any way derogatory or detrimental or negative as to the foundation, and although it wasn't me, it was Deanna that was involved in that, she talked to me at one point and was concerned that it may have been interpreted that way, and was very concerned that, that it not being that she had never intended, and she had actually conveyed that to me previously, and I just want to pass it on, anybody here that's here for that reason, there was some undercurrent that maybe there was a negative, you know, situation or connotation, and I, and from my discussion with Deanna, it certainly was not, not the case, in addition to what she said today, so.
That is true. Deborah, any comments on that?
I have a lot of ques, a lot of comments. Um, I, I was shocked to receive this letter about Bob Hunter resigning, very common, um, reason, uh, due to family and personal responsibilities that has been given, and it, it makes me sad, too, because I remember when the foundation started, and Bob has done such a great job. Quite frankly, I don't think, I haven't had a chance to talk with any of you about your concerns, but the foundation is our de facto Parks and Recs department, we have nothing. You are under the umbrella of the city, even though you're a separate entity. We approve the appointment of board members, although most of the time, hey, if somebody wants to volunteer, more, more power to you. But we have, uh, not just a, a right, but a responsibility to provide some oversight. We gave ten thousand dollars to the foundation, and then we were told they were turning back around and giving it to us for a sign. Okay, what's the point of us giving ten thousand dollars to the foundation for the 50th anniversary, and then you giving us the money back? I mean, what's the point of that, shuffling money around? I, I have some questions myself, I'd like, for the community's sake. Where, uh, where can they get their hands on the financials? Where can they look and see where the money's going, where it's coming from? Uh, and I do want to know, where is most of the money coming from? Is it gifts from our larger, um, like, I know Union Bank is a big supporter, is, is that where most of the money's coming from? How are the decisions made about where it's going? Um, I, I am concerned to find out that we, we were not billing for staff time, because I had always assumed, uh, that our, um, Public Works crew was being paid by the foundation for the time that they were here, and they deserve to be paid, they already work long and hard enough, so I think it's wonderful, it's a good idea for us to sit and look at this. It certainly isn't meant as an affront, it's meant to keep you, uh, keep us all on our toes and keep us all on the straight and narrow, so that people feel more comfortable and confident about supporting the foundation. How are decisions made? Are they unilateral? Is it just one individual? What's the size of the board right now? I don't even know.
We have thirteen members of record on the board.
Okay. And they all have specific responsibilities assigned to them now?
Um, I wouldn't say that they all had specific responsibilities assigned to them, let me just speak to that, 'cause I think it's really critically important. Um, and I think it is the, maybe the, the thing that, um, that the board members are most sensitive to. Um, it's pretty clear that we try to, to walk as closely as we can to the bylaws that were established so many years ago, uh, for this particular group. Um, uh, I, I can speak for myself, but I think I can speak for the remainder of the board as well. When I was, uh, indicated an interest in just giving more back to my city, uh, I wasn't trying to volunteer, to roll up my sleeves, to, to necessarily have to shepherd a specific event, I was just trying to, trying to play a role that, that sort of played to my strengths. And so, in, um, working through the various roles on the, the board, there's some degree of experimentation, I have to admit. Um, when I first joined the board, for example, I was, was asked to be director of events, I had no clue what that meant, uh, didn't get a lot of guidance, but that's not a negative thing, in fact, I'm glad that I wasn't. And, uh, the good news is that ultimately, what it did was that it encouraged me to, to raise my hand very high for the 50th anniversary. But, I mean, that said, um, not everybody has a very specific title that says, you know, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this, and I think we would like to have some bit of flexibility in that particular regard, so that people can play to their strengths. Um, if, if, if the idea is for everyone on the board to just simply roll up their sleeves to be chairperson of a specific event, then we don't, I, my, my, my own particular view is that we don't need necessarily a foundation for that purpose. You've just got a group of volunteers, and that's still okay, but, but you don't really need a formal structured foundation to execute that work, 'cause you're just looking for, for worker bees. We're hoping that we can, and have been making a contribution in a, in a bit of a broader sense as well, because we do reach out to the community, to, uh, uh, commercial folks, as well as residents, to help raise money, to fund events that benefit the community at large as well. So, I know it's a little bit of a long-winded answer to your question about the roles, but I just wanted to be clear about that. I mean, not everybody has a, a specific assignment of some particular thing that they have to go run off and, and be responsible for, but everybody is very busy doing something, and that's really critically important. Um, you can question whether or not everybody is, 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 is giving their all, I have no idea what that means, but they're all volunteers, and they're all passionate volunteers, so that much I do know. And, uh, uh, I would just, uh, sort of look to the good book, I think, as my, in, in terms of my final comment, which is, not equal giving, but equal sacrifice. And I think everybody is equally sacrificing, they may not be equally giving, but that's okay with me. Um, the, uh, some of the other points that you raised, I would like to speak to, but I think I would maybe ask Bill Nelson to help me with, with regard to some of the comments that you were making about the financials. He's our treasurer, he's done an incredible job, I'll let him speak.
Yeah, I'm Bill Nelson, I'm the treasurer of the foundation. In regard to your question, Ms. Paulie, uh, three of the council members, I believe, do get our financial statements on, on a monthly basis. I know the representative to the council, the mayor gets it, and I believe, uh, Councilman Mills, I believe you're on the mailing list as well, aren't you? So they do get those, they, they're available to the public, to anyone, we could put them on our website if you'd like, if you'd like for us to do that. But our major contributions come from members in the community, that's where we get our major contributions from. Uh, in regard to the issue about the fifteen thousand dollars for the sign, it was never approved, what we budgeted for it this year, the same as the council does, you budget for something, and then when it comes up, you take a look at it, and you decide whether you want to approve it or not. It was never approved, it was in the budget, and soon as we get an application for it, the board will review it and make a decision on it. There, there was never anything that said we had com, definitely committed this, we had budgeted for it, that's all it is, same process that you have. As far as, uh, employees pay, we've paid for every bill Villa Park has sent us for employees. We paid for Santa's parade, for, uh, the, uh, everything except the Halloween Fest. My understanding was that there was informal agreement between the city and the foundation not to pay for those. Now, the city can anytime give an in-kind contribution to the foundation, and what we're going to do, we're gonna formalize that, and we're going to pay for Halloween Fest as well, and we're gonna have a formal agreement on all the payments to the city, so that there won't be any misunderstandings in the future.
Thank you. Please don't misunderstand me. Um, you're a volunteer, I'm a volunteer, we're all volunteers, playing to our strengths, as Mr. Bender pointed out. Um, I would like to request that all members of the council receive your, uh, financial reports if you're providing them anyway.
Be more than happy to.
That would be great.
That was, that was a list I had when I became treasurer, that's the way they distributed them. I hadn't got any requests from anyone, we're always happy to put you on the mailing list, you'll, you'll get it every month at the end of the month.
That's wonderful, I appreciate that, I do. I think that everyone appreciates the volunteer work done by each individual member of the foundation and the foundation collectively, I don't misunderstand that. I also don't like the idea of, um, volunteers being pressured or forced or even, um, harassed for not doing enough. They should do what they can do, based on their time availability and their age, or, you know, health, you name it. Uh, and I understand that there's been some, some issues there, but you know, the foundation's pretty young, it's only, what, about a decade old?
It's ten years old, it started in 2002.
So you're experiencing growing pains, that's all, many cities are ma, way older than ours, and their foundations are way older, so this is just a time, I think it's a healthy thing, to bring it forward and have a discussion with the council and air some of these issues out, that we've been hearing about in the community.
I don't think it's going through any growing pains, I see it as a very well-run foundation.
You don't think it's growing? I think it is.
I said I don't think it has growing pains.
Oh, I see.
It is growing, but not with pain.
Okay.
It's, it's a well-run foundation, and I've sat on many different boards and committees and things, and this is one of the finest organizations I've been associated with, is the foundation here. And everyone on that board put in innumerable hours per week. I know I do, when we come out with the, with the, uh, solicitations each year, I spend hours and hours on the computer there, entering each one of those checks, uh, over and over and over again, to the point that, uh, my wife gets kind of upset with me from time to time. You know? So I have the kind of smooth relationship with her, and I'm spending four, five hours on the computer there, entering all this financial information. And we put out the financial reports on a monthly basis, right on time. It's completely transparent, you can ask any question, we have the answer to the information for you.
Great. Let me open this up to the public, does anyone in the public have any comments they'd like to make on this item? Uh, seeing, oh, I guess we have one. Hi, Jill.
This is our website. If you want to know what's happening for the foundation in the city of Villa Park, you'll find it there, you'll find all of our purposes, you will find pictures of all the things that are going, the complete parts of the celebration, and you'll find a list of all the members who have said that they're willing to have their name on that list, as well as all the contributors, they're all recognized, and we appreciate their donors so very much. And so I hope that if you haven't, and if you can't remember this, no big deal, just go to the city website, push the button under foundation, and you'll learn more things than you ever really want to know, and you'll probably see a picture of your neighbor in an embarrassing situation, so.
That's worth it, right there.
Several times, if you may.
Anyway, um, and I just got, I was, I was late, because I just got a, a message from our membership chair, who is in, at Balti, and the new membership brochure is going out in the mail, it is next week, it's on, way to the printer tonight, and so look for that, you'll see who all the 2012 donors are, will be included in that, as well as the business sponsors, and you'll see that this community loves the foundation.
Thank you, Jill. Yeah.
I have a, Greg?
Just, just one more quick point, because, uh, uh, Councilwoman Paulie asked a question that I don't think we answered, which was with regard to how are decisions made? They're not made unilaterally, I, I think that was the question you asked. And, um, the group works pretty hard to be, uh, to be its own diligent check and balance, so to speak. Um, uh, Bill can't write a check for his next vacation, uh, on his own, and, uh, Bob, Bob Hunter can't unilaterally, as the, as the chair, could not unilaterally make a, a choice to support anything without the, the board's, um, due diligence and proper vote. So, uh, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to screw it up, quite frankly. Um, the other thing that, that we will say is, again, I just want to make, make sure that, that I'm clear about this, uh, but I think Bill spoke to it fairly eloquently. We, our books are completely open to anyone and everyone at any time, and we really welcome, actually, the feedback, the input, the scrutiny, prayers, whatever else you got for us. We, we, uh, it's, this is a, this is a labor of love, and we, we, we're gonna continue to do that, but we know that we can't do it in an insular sort of way. So we welcome feedback, we welcome, uh, the observations, and we just want everyone to know that we're here for you, we got no ulterior motives whatsoever, and we're gonna continue to do the best job that we can. But anybody wants to see the books, we're happy to, to share every penny.
Excellent. Uh, Councilwoman Fasenelli?
One more comment. For the benefit of the people here, as well as people watching, what is the purpose of the foundation? The money that goes in, is donated, what would be, what's the primary focus?
Well, I, you know, I, I guess there's, there's, I know that there's at least three different ways to articulate that, let me just try to give it, share it with you from Doug's perspective. Um, I think it's for full, uh, but if you just want it, just a caps, encapsulating statement, it's really truly to enhance the, um, the, the, the level of community and the level of energy and passion for our community amongst the relative, the residents through, um, all of the above means. It may be, uh, sponsoring, it may be coordinating, it may be championing, uh, it may be planning, uh, city events, um, such as a picnic and that sort of thing, it might even be, be sponsoring other kinds of things at the, at the school level, or providing grants for, uh, supporting worthy causes that enhance our community. So that's really what it is in a nutshell, it's, it's truly about making sure that our community is a much better community as a result of the work that we do, in whatever form or shape that takes, fundraising, what have you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, if I may jump in, you know, the, pigging back on what Doug said, so in the bylaws, it actually lists some of those purposes, and I, I think I actually wrote this ten years ago, if I remember. Um, but, just what I said, yeah, "To provide safe recreational and other community activity opportunities for youth, adults, and seniors, to coordinate the planning, preservation, and presentation of leisure, historical, music, and/or arts programs within the city of Villa Park, to coordinate the use and development of community resources to lessen the burdens of government, and to promote and support activities sought to improve the quality of life for persons who live, work, or play in the city of Villa Park." So that encompasses everything he talked about. That was-
Good stuff.
Why, thank you. I have nothing to do with it. Um, so that's exactly what he was talking about, and that's the legal, you know, and under the nonprofit law, you know, they have to follow these, 'cause that's the purpose of their, of their incorporation, and, you know, we watch, and they do, and that's, um, everything's cool from the legal end on that, so.
Great, thank you, Todd. Any final comments?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Well, we, um, I think we had a good dialogue here, um, about everything. I know that everyone up here appreciates tremendously what the foundation does, and I certainly thank Bob Hunter as well. Um, he's been doing this a long time, and I understand, um, there, there becomes a time where you do step down, but I just want to heartfully thank the foundation for everything they do for our community, truly, it makes it a better place. I know Councilwoman Fasenelli is, uh, being new on council, um, her, her feeling is, when we say something, or the city says something in public on television, we want to make sure it's accurate. And I think that's, and I think there has been some handshake kind of things between the foundation and the city, which has been fine, everything has been good, but when we say something and it really didn't happen, then all of us kind of just need to tighten up our little paperwork a little bit, no big deal, we love the foundation.
We agree, we agree, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we need to take a motion on this item, is that true, Jared, or what do you think? Just a discussion is fine?
You're receiving.
Okay, excellent. All right, so moving on to our next item, um, do we have a presentation from the Orange County Fire Authority? Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, my name is Steve Partey, I'm a battalion chief with the Orange County Fire Authority here in Battalion Three. I'm a battalion chief with the Orange County Fire Authority here in Battalion Three. Just briefly, looking at the numbers for Engine 23 this month, excuse me. In the past 30 days, Engine 23 ran roughly 78 calls total. 21 of those were in the city of Villa Park, 18 in the city of Orange, and the remaining 39 were in the surrounding unincorporated county areas. The vast majority of those, 50 of them, were medical aids, 17 of those in Villa Park, 14 in Orange, and 19 in those unincorporated areas. That left 28 various responses, including structure responses, traffic collisions, vehicle fires, and automatic fire alarms in the area. More importantly, or equally as important, Engine 23 was one of the units involved in a every 15 minutes DUI lock scenario that was held at Villa Park High School. There was many partners involved, including Mercy Air and Care Ambulance, the CHP, TIP, and MAD. And in closing, I'd really like to just remind everyone that since the last city council meeting, we've changed our clocks. Just remind the citizens again, it's time to check your smoke alarm batteries so that we're all up to speed on that.
Good point.
If there's anything else I can answer, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Finally, Lieutenant Gunzle, do we have an update on law enforcement activities?
Okay, let me go over the stats real quick before I introduce Jeff. February Part 1 crime stats. We had 11 total Part 1 crimes. The numbers are skewed a little bit, because one individual created four different stats for us, four vehicle burglaries, unfortunately, at one location. The other crimes were thefts and vandalisms, and four of those were either the junior high school or the high school. So overall, the numbers are actually the same as what last year's March, or February numbers were. We also, as the chief said, we participated in the Every 15 Minutes program, along with Orange PD, and CHP was for the law enforcement side. And I'm not sure if anybody here participated or got to view that program, but very impactful for the participants and the upperclassmen at Villa Park High School. Ryan and myself went and watched the mock scenario. It was very well done. The Keys, an update for the Keys for the SRO, we are moving forward with that, with Orange Unified. They're looking to do a Knox-Box type of scenario. All the details haven't been decided on that yet. Couple things are changing with deputies. This large gentleman behind me, he's one of our newest, I'll introduce him in a second. But we also are losing Deputy Castro from night shift. He decided to take a position in Rancho Santa Margarita that involves DUI enforcement he was excited about, so the search is on for another new Villa Park deputy. And I don't know if I'd ever discuss it with the council, but I mean, this is something that's very personal to me. I used to be a Villa Park deputy, so I handpicked the guys that come work here, and it's important I look for a certain type of individual. And then Melanie Cooper, the SRO, was actually on the investigative list, so she should promote here. Good for her, a promotion within the coming months. So it's going to be a lot of changes. But with that, I want to introduce Jeff Rollins.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come in tonight and introduce myself to the community, and just like to say hi to the members of the community that are here tonight. I grew up in Orange County, and I graduated from Cal State Fullerton with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration. 1998, I was hired by the Orange County Sheriff's Department. I'd like to think I've had a pretty good career there so far. I've been fortunate to work some special assignments. I was a facility training officer for four years when I worked in custody. I've worked in our background investigations unit, and I was a tactical officer at our Sheriff's Special Officer Academy. And then I was given the opportunity to come work in Villa Park, which I'm grateful to have. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Gunzle for having the confidence to allow me to come work here. As you all know, it's a fine community. I've been here for two months, and I've, you know, had the opportunity to meet members of the community, and it's just really been a nice welcome from city staff. I'd like to thank Jared and his staff for making me feel welcome, and I just look forward to serving the community here.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
And I didn't just choose him because of his size, so. Thought that did play into the decision.
Well, I was telling you about, you finally have a proper-sized cop in the town, right?
Oh, geez.
It's an attitude also. I could put a bunch of big cops here that don't have the right attitude, so. Any questions for me on anything?
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Are there any stats on the percentage of the crimes here that are solved, resolved? Do we have any stats on that?
Probably through the investigation detail. Unfortunately, investigations isn't under me, it's under investigative detail. So if you need those, I can certainly get those stats.
I would enjoy seeing, hearing not only how many crimes we have, but how many have been resolved, even on an ongoing basis, because we get the stats every month, but I never have any idea how many of them are solved, you know, none, 80% of them?
Well, some of those, and it's hard to quantify, just because sometimes the crimes that occurred a year and a half ago get solved, you know, this month, so to say, yeah, we've solved four crimes, it doesn't equate to the 11 that happened this month.
I realize it probably won't correspond almost whatsoever to the crimes you're reporting, but every month we get the report, there was, you know, 11 of these, five of these, whatever, for a total of X. It would be nice for me, each month, to hear we solved or resolved X Villa Park crimes this month. It may not have no relation to the ones that occurred, but it would be nice just to see the respective numbers. How many occurred? How many resolved? Solved?
Yeah, we can do that.
That would be great. I would appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but I think we all enjoyed our lunch today with Lieutenant Gunzle. Today was the Medal of Valor luncheon, the annual, the 25th annual Medal of Valor luncheon, where they recognize law enforcement sheriffs that have gone above and beyond the call of duty. And we've been fortunate, every year we seem to have somebody, and this year it was actually a civilian, who is Villa Park resident Jay Wasserman, who was honored. He's a reserve deputy who works down on Harbor Patrol, I believe, and he was primarily recognized for the wonderful work he's done with Make-A-Wish, the Make-A-Wish Foundation. But wow, what honor he brought to our community, our city, and he was really glad to see us. He thought, he was, it's a lot of people that are there, and he was way on the other side of the room, and he was feeling kind of sad, thinking Villa Park didn't show up. So I made you go find where he was sitting, so I could go find him and bring him over, and it made him feel happy to know that we were all there. But we were really proud of Jay, and we're always so proud of our law enforcement. I feel like, I know we pay $1.2 million for it, but I think we get a pretty good bang for our buck.
Great. Any further comments? Okay, thank you, Lieutenant Gunzle. All right. Now we move to oral communications on matters that are not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you wish to address the city council, please step to the podium and state your name and address. Oral communications will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers. Do we have any speakers tonight? Wow. This is pretty cool. I like it. Next.
Scary.
All right. We now move to our first public hearing. Our first hearing tonight is to consider a conditional use permit at 18612 Mesa Drive. Jennifer, do you have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'm going to ask Tyler to go ahead and present for you this evening.
Great.
I guess we're waiting for, there it is. All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's first agenda item is conditional use permit number 0737. The applicant, Mr. Brian Scott, is proposing to remodel the two-story home at 18612 Mesa Drive, located in the E4 zone. As you can see in the slide, the home is on the south of Mesa Drive. The lot size is 37,178 square feet. The existing two-story home is 4,400 square feet with a 720-square-foot attached three-car garage and a building height of 32 feet. The applicant is proposing to increase the size of the home by 190 square feet by remodeling the master bedroom on the second story, totaling 5,310 square feet. The roof line above the addition will be extended horizontally towards the rear, and so the height will not increase above 32 feet. Because the building is 32-feet height, it requires a conditional use permit for exceeding the 25-foot limitation. Other than this request, the applicant is in compliance with all other requirements for development within the E4 zone, including setbacks, lot coverage, and floor area ratio. After reviewing the proposal, staff's research has found many homes within the city that exceed the building height, and the applicant has plans to design the home to be aesthetically pleasing and complimentary to the surrounding homes. Therefore, staff does support and recommend approval of conditional use permit 0737.
Great. Thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome.
Good report. Council members, any questions of staff on this item?
I got one. Were there any complaints, neighborhood complaints?
We did have one letter from a property owner to the north. His name is Paul Kramer. I'm not sure if he's in the audience tonight.
And just to clarify, it wasn't so much a complaint, he had a concern over the addition to the house. When we walked him through the application and explained that this is not actually a variance from the code, and just for the benefit of folks at home and in the audience, our code allows you to exceed 25 feet in height with a conditional use permit. So if you wanted to go above the 35 feet, then you would be getting into a variance. But in this case, they are within the parameters of the code with the conditional use permit. The property owner that had the concerns was satisfied with that response. They're really concerned about their view that they enjoy today, and they wanted to express to the council their concern with future development on this site. We explained to them that while we appreciate that, in Villa Park, we do not have a view protection ordinance, and so long as an applicant is developing within the parameters of the code, they would be able to add on. The limitations would be site coverage and FAR. And as Tyler explained, at this point, they've not gone to even getting close to either of those development standards.
So there is no pending complaint at this point?
Not a complaint, but they did ask that we mentioned to the council that they did have concern with future development. They were okay with this application moving forward, but they just wanted it kind of in the record that they would like to see the view somehow maintained, and that the council would just consider that in the future.
Not with regard to this expansion?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Jennifer. I'd like to open this up to the public. If anyone has any comments on this item? Seeing none, I'd come back to the council members for any final comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
I will move it.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion on the floor is to adopt Resolution 2013 3229, approving conditional use permit number 0737. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fassinelli?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Our second hearing tonight is to consider two variance permits and a conditional use permit at 18522 Villa Drive. Jennifer, are you going to do this one, or off to Tyler?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Tyler to present to you this evening.
All right.
Making it easy, honor. And good evening again, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's second agenda item is variance permit number 0738, variance permit number 0739, and conditional use permit number 0740. The applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Carl Kretziger, are proposing to reduce the side yard setback, also to reduce the front yard setback, and to construct a new attached garage exceeding the three-car limitation at their property at 18500 Villa Drive, located in the E4 zone. As you can see in the slide, the home is on the south side of Villa Drive, which is just north of Valley. The 2,946-square-foot single-story residence is located on a 26,964-square-foot lot. The lot width is approximately 287 square feet, or 287 feet, sorry, with an average depth of 93 feet. Municipal Code Section 23-6.7 requires a minimum side yard setback of 10% of the average lot width, or a maximum of 20 feet. The applicant is proposing to reduce their setback for the side yard to 10 feet 8 inches, thus requiring the variance. In addition to the side yard setback, the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the front yard setback from previously approved 20 feet to a new setback of 17 feet 8 inches. In order to approve a variance, the staff needs to make the five mandatory findings. These findings are based on special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, slope, topography, location, or surroundings. As you can see in the slide, as you can see in the slide, the property is long, narrow, and limited buildable space, and given the change in slope, is not found to be common within the E4 zone. Also, the strict adherence to the front and side yard setback standards would significantly reduce or even disallow this property from building similar structures to other lots in the E4 zone. After reviewing the proposal, staff was able to, these are just a few pictures of the property, staff was able to make the necessary findings to grant a variance for reducing the side yard setback and the front yard setback. In addition, staff's research has found many homes within the E4 zone that exceed the three-car limitation, and the applicant plans to design the garage to be aesthetically pleasing and complimentary to the surrounding neighborhood. Staff does recommend the approval of variance permit number 0738, variance permit number 0739, and conditional use permit number 0740.
Great. Thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome.
Council members, any questions of staff on these items?
I just have the same one about complaints. No complaints?
We've had no complaints, calls, emails.
Okay, and I noticed in the app that he had most of the neighbors sign off on it, too.
That is correct.
Which we like when that happens. That's a neat thing.
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, we do appreciate that. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone to speak on this item? We're moving right along, aren't we? Comes back to the council members. If there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion?
I will.
Okay. Rick moved it, and Councilmember Mills seconded it. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion on the floor is to adopt Resolution 2013 3233, approving variance permit 0738, 0739, and conditional use permit 0740. Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fassinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. Item three is our third hearing tonight, and it is to consider a variance permit at 18500 Villa Drive. I'm just going to go right to Tyler on this one.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, actually, I will be doing it.
Oh, you're killing me. You're killing me. All right, Jennifer.
Had to keep you guessing. Sorry about that. So the item before you is a request for a variance for front yard fencing and a gate at property located at 15000 Villa Drive. And if we can go to the next slide, you can see here the property, again, on a bit of a slope, an unusual-sized property as well, and Tyler has illustrated for you, we've got a very wide property, about 200 feet in width, 160 feet in depth, so much more deeper than the last property that we just looked at. The width of the property, though, makes this a little bit unusual, where their property line and their driveway, and we'll see it in some pictures coming up, runs adjacent to this private, narrow street. And so, can you go back to that slide? Sorry. And so it really does make the property open and accessible to the public from that street. And then the house actually sits down lower from the street, so you almost don't see the house when you're standing on the street itself. Next slide. Thank you. Our rules for fencing and a front yard setback in the E4 zone is that we allow fences 42 inches in height within the first 20 feet of your property. Beyond 20 feet, you're allowed to go up six feet in height. This request, the property owners are asking for a five-foot setback to allow a six-foot high fence. We have a pretty good illustration here of what this would look like. So this slide shows the 20-foot setback requirement. As Tyler mentioned in the last application, with a variance, we have to make five required findings, that there are unusual circumstances on this property that do not apply to others. With a fence variance, we actually have two additional findings that we have to make, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that in just a moment. But here you can see where that block line is. It's actually green, but here on the screen, it's black, so sorry, it's not showing up quite as strong. Oh, sorry, can you go back to the? Thank you. So you can see with that 20-foot setback that if we were to require the property owner to have fencing maintained at that 20-foot setback, they actually wouldn't be blocking to have fencing maintained at that 20-foot setback, they actually wouldn't be blocking access to their driveway. One of the concerns and the complaints that the resident has is that they'd like to avoid people coming into the driveway off of this narrow street and getting to the point where they'd have to come all the way down their driveway, turn around in order to exit the property safely. Requiring them to maintain that 20-foot setback would not limit that movement from happening, and so it would still allow people onto the property. This is unusual, it's not typical of what we see in Villa Park. Usually, you'd see a driveway that would run kind of down the depth of the lot, and you could easily put a gate across and make sure that folks don't have access to your property. Okay, now, we can show you. The two additional findings that we have to make with fencing is that if we reduce the setback, that the reduction would not cause any traffic hazards or potential traffic conflicts or hazards to the neighborhood. With the request, the property owner is asking for a 5 feet, we actually would have an instance where the gate being across the driveway, in order to get the gate open, you would have a car hanging into the street for some period of time. This may not be a large problem on other streets, this is a very narrow public street, and so having a car hang out into the street itself would potentially create a traffic hazard, causing staff not to be able to make those two additional required findings. We show here the driveway to show kind of a typical sized vehicle coming into the driveway, and again, this is at about 10 feet to 12 feet where the car would be fully removed from the street. So in our next exhibit, what we're showing you is the 5-foot request that the applicant has submitted is in blue on the screen, and you can see how, again, because their property line kind of meanders along the front, we've also shown how the setback would do the same. And the applicant requested 5 feet because, as you can see, it does block access to their driveway and also gives them security fencing along the front. The 20-foot setback, as we've already showed, would not accomplish that. Staff is recommending that the council consider an alternative request, which would be a 12-foot setback. We believe that we've shown in this exhibit that it accomplishes the same thing that the applicant is looking for, which is blocking access to their driveway and also allowing them additional security fencing across the front of the property, but allowing us to make the required findings that we have in the code of removing vehicles from the street and not causing potential traffic hazards or hazards in the neighborhood. Because we aren't able to make the necessary findings for the 5-foot setback, we could not bring forward to you a resolution to approve that request. So in your packet this evening, we've presented a request, or a resolution that would approve the request at a 12-foot setback. We have met with the property owner, we've explained the situation. They wanted us to still come forward with the 5-foot request, understanding that we couldn't make the findings, but the council could at least hear their request and make a determination at that time. So they are here this evening, I'm sure they'd like to speak with you, but staff is recommending approval of the variance of the 12-foot setback for this property. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you Jennifer. Council members, any questions of Jennifer?
Jennifer, on this street, when I drove up there, it says no parking. Is there no parking on either side of that street?
There is no parking on either side of that street.
So for, if we, if we would grant them the 5-foot setback, they would be turning left into their driveway, but their car would be in the middle of the street, so someone would not be able to pass for them to be able to have the gate open, am I correct?
Right.
If it's 12 feet, they would be able to pull into the driveway, push the button, and the gate would be able to open, and the street would not be blocked.
That's correct. And more what we're concerned with even than the owner and themselves accessing the property is a visitor or a guest or a stranger who needs to turn around, and that would be a bit of an awkward maneuver at 5 feet, having to block traffic for a little bit of time while they maneuvered around. And because we have to plan for kind of worst-case scenario, that's why we took that into consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Yes, you keep talking about traffic. There doesn't seem to be a lot of traffic on that particular street whenever I'm there. I've walked it many times and there's never anybody there. So what traffic are you talking about?
That's a really great question. It is the-
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's the potential of cars driving down the street. So it's not so much the volume, it's folks being allowed to have access to the street. Again, worst-case scenario, somebody pulls into the driveway with a gate at 5 feet, their car breaks down, now they're blocking the street until that tow truck comes, something happens, and folks can't get in or out of that street or have limited, more limited access. So we do try to look at those unusual circumstances. The code requires us to make that finding saying that there would not be any traffic conditions that we would be impacting. Again, the council has the purview to look at that a little bit differently, but from a staff's perspective, we really felt that it was a challenging finding to make.
And how many properties are beyond their property? Continuing up the hill, there are-
There's three properties.
Three.
Three properties.
Okay. And I just have, I have one other question, because when I first started reading this, it kind of reminded me in many ways about the property on Santiago that we did an after-the-fact approval. What was the depth? Do you remember that offhand?
I want to say they were at 110 on Santiago.
For Santiago?
Yeah, but the depth for where they're pulling in and there was the gate-
Oh, I apologize, I think we were at 12 feet there as well.
That was 12 feet.
Yep. And the difference, the difference there is we could find, because of the setback that we were requiring for cars to pull into the driveway, that we could meet the condition of not blocking traffic. So that was the difference in the two applications.
Right, and Santiago does have quite a bit of traffic, though.
Absolutely.
Substantially more. I'm going to ask Rick's favorite question, because it's always one of mine as well. Were there any complaints by neighbors or have they?
There were not, and the applicant also did talk to their neighbors, and they are in support of them having access, or blocking access to their driveway. And it's important for me to note, we didn't put it in the presentation because it's a little bit challenging, but there are several properties in this neighborhood that have fences and gates across their property, right at the property line or within very short distance. We did do research on all of those and could not find that they, either that they were installed prior to the code being in place, or that they've been in place and did not have the benefit of a variance or conditional use permit to-
Their driveways are set slightly differently, though this one's quite unusual.
Absolutely.
Quite unusual. All right, that's all for now, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll open it up.
I've got a couple of them. I went up and drove it as well, and I noticed there's some zero setbacks, but they're in the cul-de-sac, and I was scratching my head thinking, look, these are right on the sidewalk, what's the problem? The other one, and I looked at it and realized, well, there's a big cul-de-sac here, you can loop all around, so it is a little different. What's the detriment in pushing them to the 12-foot mark? Okay, I understand the desirability of five. What's the detriment? What is it that's creating concern that they want to stay with a 5 versus a 12?
I would actually think that the applicant may want to address that, but from, from what I understand, they felt that they would have more security and safety by having the gate out closer to the street. We don't disagree with them. What we tried to come up with was kind of a in-between solution, so we can meet the findings and yet they still can maintain the safety and security of their property. We did walk that with them, walk through how the setback could be maintained at 12 feet, and they can still get that same access. I'd be happy to have you address the applicant if they, if they still feel that 5 feet is really their optimum solution, that would be their concern.
Would you refer that I ask them about the enhanced security?
I think that that would be a good idea.
Can I, can I just ask here? But the fence is not going around their property, it's only in the driveway. So as far as security goes, someone just walks around the gates.
That is correct. At this time, they are only planning on installing a fence across, excuse me, access gate across the driveway. This variance, however, would allow them at a future time, if they chose to, to also install a gate at the, or a fence at the same setback. But at this time, you're absolutely correct, only a gate is being installed.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and open this up to the public? If the public and/or the homeowner would like to step to the podium, please?
My name is Stephen Toomey, and I live at 18500 Villa Drive. And you're absolutely right that this is a very, very low-volume traffic street. We surveyed the neighbors in the immediate area, four of them, the one across the street, the one to the right, anybody that was 300 feet around our area, and nobody seems to have any issues with it. The street is wide enough that if somebody was at the 5-foot entrance where we want to put the gate, that you could get by easily. Okay? Why they have no parking on the street, I don't know, but we've been there a long time, and I assume that the property, if anybody knows Villa Park, that was built by the former mayor of Villa Park, and he didn't do a very good job of laying out how the driveway should have been built, but you know, that's another story. And why we wanted to put the gate at 5-foot is that, that we're just going to, we're going to build more than just the gate. We want to have a entrance for people doing the pool and that type of stuff to the left, and then on the right, we wanted to run a, probably a 3-foot fence there going over into the bougainvillea so that nobody could come down the driveway. And when, if we move the, the gate further down the driveway, people can walk around it. So you know, that's, that's the reason for it. And having been, I was in the traffic safety business for 40 years, and I know something about vehicle count and this type of stuff, and it's really not an issue, in our opinion. You only have 1, 2, 3 homes, and then you have, you have 5 homes that it affects, and there's really not a lot of traffic up there. Now, have we had some crime up there? Yes, we have. And that's one of the reasons, 3 or 4 years ago, someone came down the driveway and broke into my wife's car and stole her briefcase, and she had identity theft. Then, most recently, we had a couple of young ladies come down the driveway, New Year's Eve, as we were going out, knocking on the door, and I don't know what their deal was, but there's been a lot of break-ins in homes in Yorba Linda and I believe the city of Orange, where they go around and, and try to see if the homeowner is home. And through the years, I mean, we've just, that was the straw that broke the camel's back. We're just tired of having people come down the driveway with no barrier to stop them. And if, aesthetically speaking, if we could put the, the gate at 5 feet, it would look a lot more pleasing. But I mean, if everybody's stuck with 12 feet because they believe that it's a big issue that a car gets, gets off the street, I guess we could live with that too, but we'd much rather, we think it's a safer situation to put it at, at 5 feet, but I guess it is what it is.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Toomey?
Yeah, I have one. I just, I just want to understand the security difference between the 5 and the 12 feet. I don't understand the additional-
Because we're going to have to, that means when you, when you move the, it looks pretty simple here, but it's not so simple in that the property to the, the right part of the property there is a hill. So we'd have to run a, we'd have to run a fence down there, and we don't think it's as positive.
You mean, you're talking about running the fence the length of these lines?
Oh, no, no, the, the, the-
This area right here?
Yeah, that area right there, yeah, yeah. No, the other side, we have, we just, it was suggested that we throw in the fence on the left because we were asking for a variance anyways, but there's a lot of bougainvillea there, and that's a positive.
So it's not this side you're concerned about?
No.
It's the other side?
Other side.
And the difference-
And, and, and at the top of the driveway to the, to the left, we would run a small fence into, right there, we'd run a small fence into the bougainvillea there, so you'd really have a positive barrier.
I have two. Are you finished? No?
Yeah, I just, I have, well, yeah, I guess I am. I am with, with the homeowner. I drove by and looked at it, and I was, frankly, I was wondering, I was thinking of really looking for security, because you could walk through all kinds of places along the front unless you fenced the whole, the whole area.
Well, I understand, though, that you, you probably didn't drive down into the driveway.
No, I didn't, I, I-
See, so you know, there's a wall that, that runs, is probably 5 feet high along there.
Where is that, by the yellow or the blue or the-
Yeah.
Blue line?
Right. So I'm not, we're not so concerned about people getting in there, because more power to them. But, but up at the top of the driveway, we think it's a more positive barrier to keep out, how do we say, undesirable people.
Well, I am.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Toomey?
I have two. I noticed that there was a, an address pillar, like an address marker pillar on that, it's on the top right corner, is that correct? Is that your address marker pillar?
Uh, you mean-
It's like a pillar with your address.
Of the mailbox?
Uh, well, maybe it's a mailbox.
Oh, well, there's a pillar there, yeah.
Yeah, and where, how far back, how far back is that pillar?
You mean the full, full lines?
Yes, right here. That's pillar?
Yeah, that's what, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay.
That's 5 feet back.
That's 5 feet back. Okay, you planning on ripping that one up?
Well, yes, I, I never thought that we had to pull a permit, those are-
That's okay, I'm just asking the question. The other question I would ask you is this, is everyone, are you on the do not solicit registry with the city?
Oh, yeah.
So that, that people who are going door-to-door with permits legally would not-
We don't, we, I, I didn't know that there was such a list, okay, but we find that people that do soliciting don't care one way or the other. If you're on the list or you're not on the list, we've been having a lot of problems with some of these green companies that call, we have unlisted phone number, but they seem to get the number and call all hours of the day. So the soliciting, through the years, we've had a lot of soliciting. And you know, we're kind of down, as you see, the, we, the front door is down at the bottom of the driveway there, and, and you know, it just creates a bad situation.
I see. Yeah, okay.
See, and the 5-foot line is right, right there, where the, right there.
Where the apron breaks.
That's right.
If I could interject one thing-
Yeah, come on up.
The other problem that causes in our driveway is that we don't park in our garages because the layout, as my husband said earlier, the layout with the driveway makes it very difficult to get to because the driveway is at the far end of the house. So we park in our driveway all the time. And so, a part of the problem is it will give us, if the setback goes to 12 feet, it will give us less room to even park in our own driveways. On top of the security issue, this picture does not show what the security issue is, but at 12 feet, you just hit the curve of the driveway, so now we're going to have to put a lot of additional fencing. Aesthetically, it's not going to look nice. And the gate will probably have to go at it and angle on the driveway as well, which is not going to look very well, very good. And it's going to be a lot more costly, plus it is going to inhibit the function of the driveway. We've lived here 19 years. You can barely get 2 cars side by side on our driveway, and there's just no way to change it because of the layout, and it was a finished product when we bought it. So the 5-foot is very important to us.
Okay.
And there is no traffic on this street. And our neighbors, 4 of our neighbors that are on either side of us and across the street have, given us their signatures as well.
Do we have those in the packet? I did not see them.
There were 2 copies, box, to Villa Park, and-
Usually, those are included in our packet when the neighbors have done that.
No, that's the original.
Thank you Judith.
Thanks.
Oh, I see. Looks like-
4 of the neighbors, the only ones that would- The four of the neighbors, the only ones that would, would find a problem if it were put at five feet, have signed off and agreed that it would not cause a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And the one thing I would like to say, having dealt with public officials in my construction background, I'd have to say that you have two excellent employees. It's nice to see that people, public officials, listen to regular citizens once in a while.
We beat them regularly if they don't act right.
All right. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item?
I'm Carl Kreitziger, resident, 18522 Villa Drive. Wanted to thank you for the approval of the last resolution for that. I was one of the signatures, that was in the package. I have no issue with them putting the fence at five feet. In fact, I can attest that there is very little traffic that you would have to deal with up there, and also that the adjacent neighbors, both across the street and at the end, have similar situations. So I feel that they are within their rights to request this, and just wanted to hear. I'm in support of our, of our neighbors, so.
Great. Thank you, Carl. All right. Anyone else from the audience? Okay. Seeing no more folks, council members, any further comments?
I would be.
Or a motion?
I would be inclined to go against staff recommendation, given the facts of that particular property in that street. And so I would be happy to make a motion that we approve their original request. Can we do it that way?
We'd actually need to take a, we'd need to bring a resolution back to you at our next meeting.
Okay.
And we need some direction on the findings. The two that we have concern with are, are in section, sorry, 23611, subsection K1 and 2. The height and location of the wall or fence as proposed will not result in or create a traffic hazard. And so what I'm hearing from council is because of the low traffic volume on the street that you feel we can make that finding.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing some nods. The second is the location, size, design, and other characteristics of the wall or fence will not create conditions or situations that may be objectionable or detrimental to the zone in which it is located. The reason why staff feels that we can't make that finding is that the intention that's been developed in your general plan and in your zoning code is that we maintain a rural and open look in our city. And so we did have concern that having fencing so close to the street starts to create a gated look rather than a more rural look. And so if we could get a little help and direction from council on that finding, that would be incredibly helpful.
That's what I'd like to comment on. One of the, when you started this out, I know there are several homes on that street that have a zero, zero lot line. As you said, they've been there. They were probably there prior to the code being as it is. So they're grandfathered until they get ripped up or want to replace the gate and so on. Aesthetically pleasing, I don't think it looks good to have a zero lot line where the gate is. I realize that there are other gates like that, but they were there, and right now we can't do anything about it unless they want to replace the gate. As far as safety issues go with this five-foot versus 12-foot, we're being a little, we're talking from both sides here, there's no traffic, but then there's a safety issue. So where are the people coming from? Why?
Well, I don't know where they're coming from, but I can attest that they do come, you know? And, and I can tell you that when my wife's cow was robbed some years ago.
Can you come back up to the podium, please?
I can tell you that when my wife's cow was robbed some years ago, what happened is somebody put an article in the LA Times about the hidden jewel of Villa Park, and that, that appeared like on a Thursday or a Friday, and then they had four or five or six break-ins all in the city. You know, and, and I mean, it's been happening over in Yorba Linda, there's been a lot of break-ins. And supposedly, it's my understanding that these two young ladies that came knocking on our door were, what do you call them, spotters? And they were involved in the Yorba Linda and the City of Orange break-ins, did go out ahead and bang on the doors to see who was home, and then they relayed back to the, they worked with the thieves who had the cars. And it's my understanding over in Yorba Linda, a couple of groups showed up in Mercedes and completely cleaned the house out, and nobody, you know, nobody in Yorba Linda, the neighbors said, gee, the Mercedes, can't be crime, and it was. And I think if, if somebody, I, I don't know if the county, the, is the county, is, is this true, that there's been some break-ins?
Yeah, all over.
Yeah? Yeah.
Right. You know, I, I'm the city attorney of Yorba Linda, over here.
Yeah.
So I know a little bit about this. That was a very unique situation, because we changed police providers, and there was a gap, frankly, in coverage, because the former, well, I won't get in too much, but that is not really analogous to here. And for everybody out in the world, Yorba Linda is very safe right now. There are sheriff's people everywhere.
Believe me.
Because of that issue. No, and I know you're not saying that.
I'm not suggesting.
I just want people out there listening to make sure not to come to Yorba Linda to try anything.
I'm not suggesting that. But there has been, it's been my understanding that, that there has been a uptick in it, that's all. You know, and I'd rather be safe than sorry, and maybe as you get older, you get a little more paranoid, I don't know.
No. But you know, if there are all these other properties surrounding them that already have this situation, they're being deprived of what all their neighbors are already doing. And that, to me, seems blatantly unfair. You know, particularly since none of the neighbors have a problem. What was it you were talking about, the intent? The intent is what the community wants. So you know, what they, they don't have a problem with it. There are four houses that are gonna be impacted.
I, I would just like to say, especially for those watching tonight, that although many residents in our town may have conditions that may not follow our code, that unfortunately is not a finding that staff can use to support a variance. It's kind of like saying all the kids are doing it, so I should be able to do it too. And unfortunately, when the kids did it and didn't follow the rules, or the rules weren't in place, and that's more likely the condition. The rules weren't here at the time, so those things we call existing nonconforming, they're allowed to stay, as our councilwoman mentioned, until they need repair or they need to be replaced. In this case, the rules are in place, and staff finds themselves in the position where we completely empathize with the property owner. We want to give them the conditions where they can feel secure and safe in our city. Unfortunately, we do have legal requirements with variances that are very challenging, and we have to be able to show that we're not giving special preference to one property owner over another. And part of what I'll say just in general is this is one of the things that we want to look at when we're done with the commercial zone, in our residential zone, is does our residential zone and development standards still reflect the needs of the community? And where it doesn't, we should make changes rather than continuing to cause property owners to have to bring variance requests to the council.
I would agree with you on that, but in the interim, these people are before us. So I think I need to ask the city attorney, you know, what, what freedoms do we have as a council to approve variances, given what Jennifer has just talked to us about?
Right. So variances are a function of state law. You can only vary from zoning codes if you meet these particularized findings. Just because we want to do it is not sufficient ground, or we think it's fair or unfair. We have to meet those findings, or else our variance could be challenged as improper and illegal. It is, in essence, a discretionary act, and you five, as the council members, are deemed as the most knowledgeable people in the city via your election to decide these issues. So if you can construct rationales that meet those findings, as Jennifer has outlined, it is within your power to grant a variance. So within the, I don't know, the panoply of options, is this possible to grant a variance? Yes, you could construct a variance, but give us direction to make, make those findings to make it legally proper, and then we will bring back, if that is the direction, we've only heard one person talk on this, we can do that. And we would bring a resolution back at the next council meeting. It would be on the consent calendar, and you would just look at it to make sure it comports with what you said here tonight. There wouldn't be another public hearing. People could still talk about it, I guess. But, so yes, you have the authority to do so if you think those findings can be made.
So it's not gonna get approved tonight, no matter what, is what you're saying?
Well, it would get approved tonight.
But it won't really get approved tonight.
It won't really get approved tonight. But, but, but all you look at is.
Stop playing attorney talk with me. You're telling me we have to bring it back.
You have to bring it back to make sure the resolution agrees with what you said tonight for the reasons you approved it.
Okay.
So it would be technically approved tonight.
Mayor Protem Barnett.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Jennifer, well, let me, if I can kind of casually ask the property owner here. The fence you're talking about, the, the other fences on the street that I looked at are wrought iron and are clearly visible through them. Is this a solid fence? Is this, is this a wrought iron type open fence? What is this?
I, go ahead. I was gonna say, actually, one of the conditions in the resolution, and we can translate that to the forthcoming resolution, would be that the fence would be open, so that that way you can see through it. And that is, so to offer a little help in these findings, one of the things that we just did with the last finding is talk about the existing conditions on the street and how there may not be hazard because of those conditions. If we're talking about the character and, of the community and the intent of what you're looking for, one of the things that we did in, in the resolution was to put the condition that the fence be open so that you can at least see through. It's not a barricade type of a setting. So if you can help us massage a little bit more in that direction, I think that we're on the right track. But again, it's a bigger couns, a question to the council, because we are dealing with then kind of varying from almost your purpose and intent of the general plan. So I just want to tread lightly there, and that direction has to come from the council and not from your lowly planning manager.
My second question is, my second question is, from a precedent perspective, where are we going with this in the community if we grant this at five feet? What's that gonna do with us from a precedent position?
So that's exactly the reason why the findings are in place for variances, because we don't want there to be a proliferation of fences at five feet if that's not the direction of the council. Otherwise, again, as I said before, we should just bring back a new code that says everybody can put a six-foot-high fence at five feet. In this case, we still have the other five findings that are required by the variance that talk about the unusual circumstances of this property that are different than any other. The driveway configuration, the width of the property, the topography on the property are very unusual for Villa Park residents. Often, you're seeing flat lots, very wide, very long in depth. You have driveways that run along the depth of the property, having a gate at 20 feet, provide safety and security and, and limited access to the lots. So I feel very confident that regardless of that setback, we can still make the findings that this is an unusual circumstance. If another property owner came in with a traditional rectangular lot and said, I want my fence at five feet as well, I would have no problem, as your planning representative, to say, this property was able to do it because there were unusual circumstances. Unfortunately, your lot does not meet the same conditions. Now, would they challenge that decision and come to the council and say, we think your planning manager is being capricious in her decision-making? Potentially. And that's why we feel strongly to bring this forward to you, rather than us start to massage those findings to a point where it does become discretionary at a staff level rather than a council level.
Any other questions at council? I see that the resident has a comment.
One comment, very quickly.
You have to come up.
Yeah, you really need to come up to the podium.
I don't want to belabor this, but I believe on Villa Park, there are only two or three homes that don't have gates. All the other gates have already been put up. And two, at the end of the street, at the cul-de-sac, of which we're very close to the cul-de-sac, we're only one house away from it, two of those gates were already at five feet and, or less. And so I don't think you'd be setting a precedent that's gonna cause a problem on our particular street, because, as I said, there's only two or three houses that don't have gates. And their situation's completely different than ours. More importantly, it's just gonna be, every day we pull in our driveway several times a day, it's going to be a real issue for us.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion and/or a motion? Deborah, you kind of made one.
Well, I would like Jennifer to figure out how to make this thing work, so that it, what they're, we're working around this most unusual property and fitting in with the properties that are surrounding it, allowing them to essentially put it at the five, five-foot setback. And really, whatever it is you feel you need to do to make that work, without giving everyone in the community carte blanche to do the same, because this is a very unusual street, that's a very unusual property. Do you feel confident that you can make that happen?
Well, of course, that's why you have me here.
That's right.
Okay.
And I hope you, I hope the council will join me in allowing these residents.
Everyone understand Deborah's motion, and do I have a second on that motion? Or do I have a substitute motion?
I, my substitute motion is to, to go with staff's recommendation at 12 feet.
I second that. Any other comments or thoughts?
Can we, can we split the baby?
Well, we, we, you, you made a motion, there wasn't a second, and we have a motion and a second on staff recommendation.
All right.
So I suppose that's where we're at.
Well, there's a substitute motion, there's a second, so there's discussion if you want to discuss, but if no discussion, then you have votes in order at the discretion of the mayor.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this, I'm more torn on this than I have any of them, and I think probably everybody feels the same way. Frankly, I'd like to give them their five feet, because I can see why they want it. They have a number of issues, a unique property, and I'd kind of like to see them have their five feet. It's not inconsistent with the rest of the street, it has low traffic volume. However, the others weren't permitted in that fashion, so we can't really use that as precedent. My concern is, I just don't want to set a precedent here that's adverse. So if it's unique enough, you know, I could probably live with, with the five feet, and I, and I can understand why they, why they want it. But, you know, as long as it doesn't set a precedent, I could do it. But I understand the 12-footer, and I've got some flexibility here, I just don't want to create a problem that bites us later when everybody wants to start sticking five-foot gates in.
You know, the whole point of a council, and bringing these things to the council, is that sometimes common sense has to override what's on the books. And common sense tells you, when you look at that property and that street and what's already there, whether it was within code at the time, or the code has changed during the course of time, it fits in for them to do what it is they're asking to do. Their residents are not, it's not like they're asking, you know, for something obscene. They're asking to be able to put a fence up to make themselves feel more secure. They want to do it in a way that's gonna work for them. They live in the house. They certainly don't want to make their house look ridiculous. There are three houses up there, and all their neighbors are okay with it. How hard is this? It isn't hard at all. It's common sense. That's our job. Insert common sense into the code.
So if I want, if I want to put up a pink wall in my, the front of my house and I get everybody.
Would you do that?
No, I would never do that, but.
And your neighbors wouldn't all sign off and say, yeah, Dan, that's an awesome idea.
But say they do, would we want that for the city?
No.
I mean, and we don't want that. And, and I think that a 12-foot wall will give them their security, a 12-foot will give them their security, will give them the cars, the little traffic that they have. I just, I think the five-foot setback is not aesthetically pleasing to the rural atmosphere that we have in the city of Villa Park. I understand the other homes have that type of a gate. Can't do anything about that. They're there.
All right. Well, this is a tough one.
Could we get, I mean, I'd like to see the, could we get the overview again? Because here's my, here's my concern. See, the way this is drawn, if I can just point this out, this is fine. It goes right across the driveway, they're five-foot. But down here, I don't think you're gonna run it at that angle. This thing's changing a bit, and I think you're gonna have to put it, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
I think it's gonna have to be more this way. And if I'm right, it's gonna be more like this to make sense. You're not gonna want something going like this across the driveway.
You're right.
So if you run it across to make it aesthetically decent, so it doesn't look like this strange design, you're gonna have to run it across here, okay? Now, I suspect what that's gonna mean is, if we give them a 12-foot setback, it's gonna be 12 feet here, but over here, it's gonna be much further down. It's gonna close them even more. Then, the gates are probably gonna swing in, in, I presume. So now, when the gates swing in, they're gonna. when the gates swing in, they're going to swing in from here, clear down to here. So if there's a parking problem, it's going to be an issue. And frankly, I'm not sure how much difference on a wrought iron fence with visibility you're going to have between here and seven feet in. I'm just not sure that's going to make a big difference. I'm not sure it's going to look any better here than it, than it is here. So again, my concern-
They're looking at safety with the car in the street, though.
Yeah. There's the safety issue, but the traffic volume is still low. How much time is it really going to spend there? So I think realistically, it probably makes sense. I can understand why they want it, and I don't really have a big problem. But my only real concern is precedent. I don't want to start doing this and have everybody screaming for five-foot fences.
That's the problem.
As long as we can keep, as long as we can keep, avoid precedent problems and having this thrown back in our face constantly, I can understand why they want it. I don't have a problem with it.
But see, that's what makes this property so unusual, is because of the way that it is set. It is really bizarre.
Uh, could we see the design proposed for the fence? For the gate, rather. There's not a fence. There is no fence there right now, at all. It's bougainvillea, which is not a fence.
That's correct. At this point, we have not gotten into design with the applicant, and so we have a site plan with their requested location of the fence, but not a formal design.
Well-
I think the homeowner's ahead of you.
There you go.
Can, can, can I make, can I make a suggestion? Can we ta, continue this item until next month to allow them to work out some of these details? Because I think we want them to-
What details?
Well-
They've already done that.
We did, we did actually, Councilmember Polly, we did-
But then you can bring back a resolution that's completed.
Yes. But to be, to be fair to the-
That's very different than the, than what I'm seeing here.
To be fair to the council, we did bring this item to the CDC, and we have met with the applicant several times. And so really, what we're looking for tonight is the full council direction from CDC. CDC was very comfortable with the twi, with the 12-foot setback. So what we're looking for tonight is the council, if you want to deviate from that 12-foot, that you would give us direction to bring back to you at the next council meeting. I'm, I'm not sure that we'll get, and, and the applicant's been wonderful to work with, so I in no way want to say that they're not willing to cooperate. But I don't think that they will necessarily want to suggest anything less. And I think staff is a little bit stuck without further direction from council on making those findings to reduce it more. But we're happy to entertain that from council's direction.
You know, I have a suggestion. Could, would it, how difficult would it be to get a couple of renderings? You know, I mean, we see them all the time. You know, here's, here's the rendering, what it's going to look like, especially with today's cams and graphics usually pretty easy. Could, could we get it?
For an elevation?
Maybe a five- and 12-foot rendering, so, so that we can see what this is going to look like, and if it does close in, and we can kind of weigh that, because it's, it's one of those real, you know, balancing acts here. You know my attitude, but, but I, it is a balancing act. And if we could see them both, coupled with what's going on here, maybe it'd make it easy to, to push us over the edge one way or the other.
So to be clear, we would bring back, next meeting, street view elevations of the fence-
Right.
At both a five-foot and a 12-foot distance.
Here's the fence they're talking about at five. Here's the layout we'd probably have to have at 12.
And then thinking down the road, what happens when that fence is continued on at the 12-foot? Because at the way it appears, it's going partially over the driveway at 12-foot, but it is not at five-foot.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah. That's legit, too.
That's, that's one of the reasons why. Just common sense when you're looking. And you brought something out, too, because of the way that, it's a very unusual cut in this property. The only way to make it where it's actually going straight across and is parallel to the street, which is what normal people would do with a gate, is to do it at that place. But government, red tape, I know. Aren't we fun?
All right. So is that another motion, Rick?
We have a, we have a motion and a second already.
Yeah.
They've got a motion on the floor.
Yep.
All right.
So somebody could do a substitute motion, or if the maker of the motion is amenable to a continuance, they could revise their motion if it's okay with the second, or if not, just let the motion go ahead.
I'd like to see it continue and get a couple of renderings, so we can take a look at it. Because I, and I think Deborah's-
Is that, is that a motion?
Yeah. I, I'd move to continue it, to get the two renderings, so that we can review, including that ex, that additional fencing, and see what this, what we're dealing with.
So you're submitting a substitute motion to the substitute motion, for which somebody would need a second, and then we'll vote on this.
I second it, because I actually made it in the first place, is what I'd like to do.
All right.
I think it's the only-
The continuance motion is now the motion on the table, and unless you want more discussion, you can go ahead and vote.
So to be clear, Deanna's motion's on the table, or Rick's motion?
Rick's motion is on the table, because there was a proper substituted motion to her substituted motion.
Got it.
And now, if this motion fails, then it goes back to Deanna's motion.
Jared. Oh, you're, really? Make it quick, please.
I've been in this city 42 years, and I don't know how many variances you guys, the earliest before you've made.
Not a whole lot.
But there's been some made. You made it two or three tonight. And are you setting a precedent there? I don't think this sets a precedent. What this gentleman is trying to do, and the lady, they have an unusual lot.
Sure.
They're on a street that's very isolated. There's only two or three homes. I see no problem. What, I mean, we've spent more time on this than probably the entire meeting. And it's a simple thing. I've got people going to sleep back here. I would say it's a, it's a no-brainer that we, I'm a five-foot on that fence, because I've been there. I'd, I would fight that forever to have the five-foot, because it's an unusual situation. I have a flat lot, and it would be completely different. I don't think you set a precedent at all.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tim Barnett has a motion. We have a second. Jared, roll call, please.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim Barnett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
So this is going to come back the next meeting?
It's going to come back the next meeting with the renderings for us to look at.
Sorry you have to wait.
Okay. Boy, that was a long one. It's a tough one. All right. Item four, this is our final hearing tonight. It's to consider an ordinance that would allow the sale of use of, I'm sorry, it would allow the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks. Jared, you have a report, please.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the second reading and the adoption of ordinance number 2013-574, which would allow for the sale and use of state-approved safe and sane fireworks on a one-year trial basis. We would review this ordinance prior, and modifications made at the last city council meeting, we, that we would review the ordinance prior to the October council meeting. The second item under this final consideration would be the first reading of ordinance 2013-575. What that ordinance does is it amends the city's fire code to allow safe and sane fireworks. Then the final item with regard to the safe and sane fireworks is consideration of Resolution 2013-3232, which assesses the $1,000 regulatory fee on the temporary permit stand applicants. Part of the ordinance, items to note is that the, the ordinance would permit up to three temporary stands in the city. The dates of sale would be seven total days, from June 28th to July 3rd, from 10:00 to 10:00, and then from July 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It only prohibits, or it only allows discharge on one day in the city, and that is actually July 4th, from noon to 10:00 p.m. Discharge would be prohibited here in the CN zone, which is the town center, on school grounds or on public property. It would be allowed 30 feet from any building in the public right-of-way. And then another thing to note is that the stands do require a 24-hour watch person, essentially. Some modifications were made to the ordinance at the last city council meeting, and those were approved and read in the first reading. To clarify them, it was, when I wrote it, I wrote it wrong, excuse me. I, I did section 12 as opposed to 11, so it changes that. Mayor Pro Tim Barnett had a good suggestion in that supervision. Fireworks would be allowed in the presence of an adult over the age of 25, or in the presence of a parent or legal guardian. Another one would be that a signed statement from the owner of record or a designee of the property owner must accompany the permit application. And then the schools would share one permit as a joint venture. And the last amendment at the last council meeting was extending it from, I think we wrote it with the August deadline, to the October. Three actions tonight are required to allow safe and sane fireworks in the city. I would note that within the last 24 hours, I have received eight me, eight emails from members of the public in opposition to the fireworks. I believe I photocopied them and placed them at your seat this evening. Staff's available for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jared. Any questions for staff?
I have a few.
Okay.
I'm picking through them here. It's authorized in public street. Can you say, Jared, is that the way you've written it?
Correct.
Now, would this allow anybody, including non-residents, to come in and set off the fireworks on Villa Park public streets?
Yeah. We would see a population swell. There's no doubt about it.
I mean-
By how much?
That's a concern, that is a concern, because is it, is it appropriate for us to restrict it to residents or to, to utilization, you know, on, on, at a private residence, you know, with a resident's consent, for example? I think, do the property lines generally go to the middle of the street? Is it just in, is the street an easement, or does the city own the street? I guess that's a question.
City ownerships of streets through Villa Park, as we learned with the Leominde Street Trail, are divergent. So sometimes it's an easement to the middle, sometimes city owns and fee. As to the issue of enforceability, as to residents only being able to shoot off fireworks, that's probably would be challengeable and not possible. We do have a restriction in the residential zones, as far as you can only set it, set fireworks off in front of somebody's house with, in front of the residents who's setting them off. I forget what the exact language is. Jared should find that. But also, on the residency issue, that's, I mean, I don't know how we would enforce that, other than going around and checking everybody's ID. So it'd be an enforcement issue as well.
So there, there is a, there is a restriction in here that it has to be with the consent of the adjacent property owner?
Any safer since ever than if there's any residents? Well, we're just looking at the language we had in here. We have, "No person shall allow the use or discharge of any safer sane fireworks." That's an 11-2.3F, within 30 feet of any residence dwelling or other structure. So it's a blanket prohibition based upon proximity of, of any residence. But somebody could still then theoretically shoot something off in front of your street in the public right-of-way. That's correct.
Anyone could. And if we tried to stop them, then that would be, what, I think you've called that selective enforcement before. We can't select who, who, who abides by the law and who doesn't.
Well, if you make something, if you make something legal within your city, you generally, under equal protection and other grounds, can't make it legal just for your residence and illegal for someone else, unless it's a specific property-related type of issue, where, yes, you can't allow somebody to do something on someone else's property, but that's more property rights-related, rather than government power-related. So, yes, that would be legally problematic and enforceably impossible.
So the only way I presume we'd be able to do that would be to restrict it to private property and not put it in the public streets?
Restrict the use of the fireworks?
To private property.
Yeah, I mean, I, we could, I, yes, ban any use of the fireworks in the public right-of-way, although I don't know if the fire guys would have more of a problem with that or not, because then it's on private property, you know, right next to your house.
It's safer on the street, because it's, it's a bigger area.
I think the safest place is on the street.
It's safer on the street.
It has to be on the street.
It's safer not to do it at all.
It has to be on the street.
A kind of big lawn goes out there. It would be an issue.
So I don't know if, when you get a chance, if you want to comment on that, or what your take is.
I mean, Rick, are you saying that people are going to drive here, park their car in front of your house, and take out their box of safe and sane fireworks and?
Well, I didn't say anything.
Theoretically, theoretically.
No, I, I didn't really say anything. I just asked a question.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And I just wanted to understand it, so I could give it some consideration. But I guess that's, you know-
Theoretically, that's what we're talking about.
Theoretically, yes. But I was really trying to understand. I heard, I looked at it, and I thought, gee, I wonder what this does. And I just asked the question. You know, I mean, I'm ready to move on to my next question and put that behind, because, because frankly, my, my response to that is, then maybe we need to look. It's a one-year trial, okay? It's a pilot program.
Yeah.
So you know what? You look, it may not even be an issue. If it is an issue, you deal with it and you move on. And I think at this point, that's the way it has to be dealt with. But that, you answered my question. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to change my answer, because I remember what I was thinking about. So in 11-2.3 subdivision E, "The discharge of safe and sane fireworks shall not be permitted in the CN zone, on school grounds, or in any public property, with the exception of residential public right-of-ways located immediately adjacent to a dwelling of individuals participating in the discharge of the safe and sane fireworks, and only if the discharge is conducted in a safe manner to ensure public safety and traffic law." But that does not, so that's tying it into the property rights issue I was talking about. There are going to be areas, though, within the city which fall outside that parameter, which people could come in and do it from outside the city. Because I will tell you, in Adelanto, where I'm city attorney, and we allow it, and we're the only one in the high desert, it's all those guys from Victorville who come in and cause all the trouble. So that is a valid concern. People could come in.
Thank you, council, because-
Yes.
Based upon the way this city is structured, I'm, I'm reasonably comfortable with that. I can understand some places it, it, it may allow different results, but Villa Park, that pretty much takes up most of the, most of the city. So my second question is, the $1,000 fee for permit, I assume that, is that for each stand, each, I assume that's for each stand?
It would be for each stand.
Okay. So, and the- And the cost analysis you did is kind of an overall, I assume?
Uh, yes. I just estimated a couple hours of the planning manager's time, to make sure it abides by all the zoning laws that we have, the building to show, we'd have to go out there and verify the construction of it. I've spent well over the two hours already administrating the program, but I've imagined the city attorney wants to take a look at it. And then I budgeted for eight additional hours of street sweeping, which would help to reduce some of the concerns of cleanup afterwards.
Great. And we've got, we're going to have probably two or three permits. I can tell you that I spoke with Ed Howard. He's contemplating, he's contemplating that it'd be two at the school. So that would be three stands. So there will be several thousand dollars here to fund this. So we should be well-covered on cleaning activity, et cetera, it looks like, based on that. Okay. And the only other question I think I had was on this lottery, oh, I had a couple of them here. Lottery terms, 11-2.5F, says, "The balance of available temporary stand permits shall be issued by lottery to the remaining nonprofit or not-for-profit organizations qualifying to terms of the article. Lotteries take place if necessary at a council meeting." I'm not really sure what the parameters are. In other words, we get 10 people come in here, or we, if we set a number on how many we would allow for the stand? Are we only going to do one? Is there any kind of compensation? What are, what are we talking about?
The code, as written, it allows for up to three temporary permit stands.
Right.
Shall issue, it's written that the Community Services Foundation, Friends of Villa Park Library, Villa Park Rotary, and Villa Park Women's League shall be issued one permit. The schools, all the parent-teacher groups, shall be issued another permit to be shared. Four groups, one permit. That takes care of two of them right now. The last permit would be a lottery amongst the applicants. So whether or not we have three additional applicants or five additional applicant, applicants, that's, you know, how we would conduct a lottery here at council meeting.
I guess my question is, you know, are we talking about drawing straws, or are we talking about picking the, the-
Name's out of the hat.
-charities that seems most beneficial? Are we talking about just one for that stand? Or we got a designated number, how many we're going to put? I just don't understand what the criteria are.
Yeah. In Adelanto, we have the city clerk stand right in the middle with a bowl, and people reach in, and if you get the magic ticket, you're in the money.
So that's, that's, so it's a straw, it's basically there, it's a straws issue. So then we would have discretion, I assume, as to how many straws we want to let go for that one stand, just like we gave four each to these stands, four charities to each stand. We've, we've got four charities-
Oh, oh, I see.
-allocated each one of the two other stands. So now we've got this lottery on the third stand, assuming we have the third stand. And do we want a discretionary with council as to how many charities we put into that stand?
You know, that's a good question. You would have to, the charities would have to agree to jointly work together. Let's say you had three other charities want a permit. You could say, "Hey, guys, do you want to split it, you know, 1/30 each, and issue them one permit for all three of them?" But they'd have to, the way the code's currently written, independently agree to that. If they didn't agree, they could say, "No, I want my name in the lottery, because I want all of the-" all of the profit to myself and go independently.
So lottery refers to just what it sounds like, chance?
Yes.
So it's a draw the straw interpretation? Okay, that answered that question. And the last one here. Which I can't find. Just disappeared because I can't, so I guess that's all my questions. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions of staff?
I have a comment just to expand it a little bit when you mentioned the street sweeping. I think the few letters that we did receive overnight, I don't think that the majority of them read the ordinance because the comments that they made have already been accounted for in the ordinance. I just wanted to make that comment. And one of them was cleaning. It was a big issue that the city was gonna have to spend the money to clean it, and it's already been accounted for, so.
I think that's a great point you bring up, actually.
Would it make sense? I got, I read the eight. I got most of these on my cellphone, and I read the eight here as well. I'm happy, if the mayor wants me to do so, I'm happy to just very briefly address where this came from, why I've moved forward with it in any way, and address these issues. If the council would rather not spend time on it, I'm happy to sit back and move for a vote.
If you can do a quick overview, I think that might be helpful.
Okay. Here's where this started. Frankly, I was at a Rotary dinner event, and somebody came up to me and said, you know, we haven't had, you know, Villa Park fireworks tried this before. It really seems like it would be a good thing to have, and blah, blah, blah. So I listened to it, and I thought about it for a few minutes, and I thought, you know, it would be nice to have because we have a lot of it anyway, and you're gonna have it. They're sold in, the Safe and Sane are sold in Fullerton, they're sold in Santa Ana. People are gonna get them, and I challenge you to find a street in Villa Park on the Fourth of July that doesn't have fireworks on it. And usually they're stuffed into, some of the times they're on the street, sometimes they're stuffed into the backyard, in the nooks and crannies where it's not visible. And I thought it would be nice to have, but I wonder what the consensus is. So frankly, I walked around the room at random, talking to Rotarians or their friends or guests or whatever, and I probably talked to maybe eight or 10 people, just to kind of fill it out, see whether it seemed like it made sense to even discuss it anymore. And every single person thought it was a good idea. I got not one negative response. So frankly, I took it a little further and kind of blabbed around the neighborhood, community, whatever, and I didn't get any more negative response. It was the same thing across the board. So then we had somebody in here, they talked about other communities and communities that had it, that had put it out to vote to see whether they wanted to continue it. One gentleman came in and said there were 25 cities that allowed it and put it to the ballot, and that all 25 cities, the people by popular vote, kept it. I believe, and I don't wanna misquote Deanna, she was concerned about it, and she contacted another city that had it, and apparently asked them for all of the problems. I want to hear about all your problems on this. And they basically told her, we really haven't had any. So, you know, I look at this and I say, okay, people are gonna do it anyway. I really don't wanna force my neighbors to become criminals to appease their kids or whatever and bring some safe and sane fireworks. So I thought about it, you know, if it comes out and it's regulated, we put it out in the street in the front yards, we keep an eye on it, we can see it, it's not near the houses, we don't have them setting off in the backyards, we have some control, since they're gonna do it anyway, rather than have them go buy it in Santa Ana or Fullerton, let's sell it here and let's let the Villa Park charities make the money on it instead of putting the money out here and still having the rubble and everything to deal with. So this ordinance came to be. It's got 25-year-old oversight requirements, 30 feet from the house, blah, 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 blah.
One-year trial.
One-year trial.
That's a big one.
You know, there, I really don't see a lot of downside to it. I have one concern, frankly, and I'll share it with everybody. We have a fairly long advance sale period, and I'm a little concerned that the kids are gonna get their hands on this stuff, and the piccolo peats are gonna blaze away for five days or something in advance, and that's a concern I have. And I asked the city manager to please put on the city website, put on the flyers at the site, and make the community as best known as best we can. Look, don't be blowing these things off and doing these piccolo peats for a week in advance. If you do, you're not gonna be looking at this situation probably next year. So, you know, that's hardly an earth-shattering event where somebody's gonna get killed with a piccolo pete, and I'm hoping it won't be too bad. Frankly, that's the biggest concern I see. The fireworks are here anyway. So we might as well put the money into Villa Park and the Villa Park charities and foundations and prove the community. Let's get it out visible, let's sanction it with appropriate oversight, and let's try it for a year and see what happens. That's basically how this came to be.
Okay. Let's open this up to the public, and then we'll bring it back to council for discussion.
When we have cleaning fees, as we just discussed. We've set a budget to enhance the cleaning fees. We don't have it now, and now you'll have money there to clean the streets.
We're talking about safe and sane, right?
Yes.
Do you realize how many restrictions you just talked about to make it safe? I don't know if we're really thinking down the right road, you know? I ran several companies before I retired, and there was good, bad, and ugly and stupid decisions. And I consider this a stupid decision, to have fireworks in Villa Park. You got a fire marshal and the fire department, and Mr. Mayor, you're an ex-fireman.
I am.
They all recommend no fireworks.
They'll recommend that all day long to every city in the world.
Yeah, and would you recommend no fireworks? You're an ex-fireman.
I am an ex-fireman, but I do recommend it for our city to try for one year.
Well, because of the potential danger of any type of fire, I've got some notes here I wanna read, make sure I get it across. Safe and sane, you know, with all the restrictions we're talking about, it doesn't sound very safe and sane to me, and why are we even talking about it? And if there is any potential of any injury, of fire of any type, why have fireworks of any way? If there is a potential of danger, a little kid putting an eye out, these little things you burn, they call them worms, you ever seen the fumes that come off there? The kid breathes that, he's in trouble. That's safe and sane. I have 12 grandchildren, all the way from one year up, and I will not let them have any fireworks. And those on the city council who vote for having fireworks in Villa Park, I think should be held legally responsible for any fire, any danger, anyone that gets hurt through this year that you're talking about. It's crazy. It's something that is impossible to conceive that we would consider it, and safe and sane is a word that I think that they put on this just to make it sound like it's safe. And with all the discussion we've had, tells me it's not safe. And Rick, I did a survey too. I talked to at least 50 of my neighbors and, you know, around, and I found two people that were for it and the rest of them were against it. Two that was for it didn't really have an opinion, they just said they, well, so I think if you really had a vote on the people in Villa Park, I think you'd find a no, no, no. And another point is that if there is any fire that goes on up through the hills in Anaheim up here, because there's homes along there, I guarantee you, this city will be sued completely because of that. I don't think, does Anaheim have fireworks?
No.
No. We get those hills on fire, and you know how it is, the fire department would tell you that in a minute. It would go right up that thing, and this city would be in deep trouble. I don't even think we should even consider it on that one point. And I think that the city would be responsible for all the damage that would occur on that. Why would we even consider fireworks when the fire chief and the local fire department recommend against it? It's a sad situation to think the council, we voted for, and the citizens in this city, I think, are against it in general. There's a few probably for it. Just for a few thousand dollars on, I don't know what we said, three different sites? I thought you'd mentioned two at the school.
Up to.
Just three maximum. So for $3,000, I don't think you cover eight hours of street cleaning with 3,000 bucks. So, and the money that the people would make, the charities off of the different sites, you know, it'd be nominal compared to what they get throughout the year. And the last point I'd like to make is that I think that there should be a vote on something like this. There's too much danger involved to children, to homes, property, and most of all, the surrounding area. And I don't know, we'd probably be the only city having it. Anaheim's against it, what other cities around us? Does Orange have fireworks?
Orange does not.
Santa Ana, Santa Ana and Buena Park, Huntington Beach.
Why would they even consider, we're gonna be a hole in the middle of the pond on this thing? And I think it's a danger that we don't even need to consider. And if you, and if you don't vote to take a vote of the city, of the citizens of this city, I think you're derelict in your duty of what you're trying to do. I mean, and I don't mean to sound just totally negative in the sense of what you're doing, but it's wrong to consider something that even has a danger to it. This guy right here will tell you, the potential is there. I know when I lived in, back east, before I came out to California 55 years ago, I know of a kid with a sparkler, they throw him back and forth, and I put out. One of those is worth the whole thing to say no to it, so.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, could you respond to some of the legal things that were mentioned?
Sure. Well, you, the city would not be legally liable. It's allowed under state law, it's a discretionary act, there's a specific immunity. Council members aren't individually liable, there's immunities for discretionary acts. So, no. No. Sure, somebody could sue you, people could sue anybody. Anaheim sues people all the time, but they wouldn't win.
And that was the first question.
Yeah, we asked that one right away.
We asked council before we even thought about proposing this. Do we have any liability? Absolutely not.
No.
Okay? And if I could, I'd just, in a couple seconds, I'd like to address a couple other comments. You made one comment that any danger, you know, anybody gets, there's any danger to this, there's danger with everything. We shouldn't do it. You know, I would point out that diving boards are a big danger, okay? If you wanna have a diving board, they're a big danger, a lot of injuries in diving, a lot more than this probably. And yet, you can have a diving board if you want a diving board. If you don't want your children to have that danger, then don't put a diving board in your house. And I respect your ability to not have your grandchildren exposed to fireworks, and so I wouldn't get them or expose them to them. And I would hope that the residents of Villa Park is a fairly affluent, well-educated city, that if there's a concern over that, don't buy them and don't have your children, utilize them, okay?
It's a danger in the back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Jamie. You know, that's a call you can make.
Sure.
The liability issue's not there. The few thousand dollars of revenue generation for the charities, let me share this.
A lot, a few thousand.
As I understand it, there's two fireworks companies have gobbled up all the others, Phantom and TNT. I was advised the other day, much to my disappointment, that they entered into a bidding contest with Ralphs, thinking that if they could get Ralphs to authorize them to use the parking lot, they would capture the control over at least one of these, of these stands. Well, my understanding is that they probably agreed to pay Ralphs about $15,000 just for the site availability recognized, and they're still gonna have to allocate the sales, probably, I don't know exactly, somewhere in the half, half and half range, is my understanding where these run, with the charities. So apparently there's enough money flowing through these that they're willing to pay $15,000 just for the right to participate on one stand in Villa Park in a profit sharing with that charity. So the indicators, a few thousand dollars, I think is misleading. That's it, that's...
Is this money issue or is it the safety issue?
I think it's everything. I think nobody's gonna say, if we know this child's gonna be injured, are we gonna take this money and do this? No, of course, nobody's gonna say that. Everything involves a risk, okay? And my, my survey of the city, other than these eight and one or two other people that talked to me, I haven't found anybody that didn't want it. When I was in the grocery store the other day complaining about this bid situation, I was speaking with the assistant manager, she said, well, I don't really think about that, but I have heard a lot of people talk, and I know apparently they're talking about allowing fireworks. I've heard a lot of people excited about it in the store, talking about, this is cool, we're gonna get this done. So, you know, I don't know what the issue is there, but I don't think you can go crazy on this, the potential that somebody could be injured from anything. Don't drive a car. Anyway, I've said enough.
All right, let's move on. Mr. McEloney.
God, I don't miss it up there. My name is Bill McEloney, I live at 18916 Valley Drive in Villa Park, been there for 45 years. I live in a area where I used to get rockets in my yard, or whatever you call them, bottle rockets or whatever. So you're not going to see everyone out there being a great citizen, shooting these things off in the street or in the schools. I think, I've talked to a lot of people, and I would say 50% of the people do not want fireworks in Villa Park. I happen to be one of the 50. And I think children getting hurt, I think we could listen to a lot of horror stories where parents have let children shoot these rockets off and whatever, and I'm sure you could give us some stories also about what you've seen. And I think the thing in Villa Park, we don't realize that we only have one and a half policemen. I haven't seen the half, but I know there is one. And when you have a problem and you call, he can't handle all those problems. So I just want you to realize that once you're gonna put on extra patrol, that you're gonna have these type of problems, that we don't have the wherewithal and the economics to bring all these people out to protect the city of Villa Park. I don't, I think we're bringing in an element that we haven't seen before, shooting off the fireworks, and like I made the statement, they're not gonna be on school property or wherever, they're gonna be at people's homes, and they're going to bring in other type of fireworks that you can get on a Tijuana and buy, or whatever. So you're, the element of people bringing in the fireworks and shooting them off here is going to be dramatic. And like I say, I think there's a lot of more people, except with the eight people that wrote to you, to say that they don't want fireworks. We haven't had them for many, many years, and I don't see why we have the need. You know, we're always interested in raising money for the city, which I think is terrific. I think a lot of us write checks to the city to put up these fancy walls and other things that we do. And we don't mind doing it because it's our way of giving back to this great city of Villa Park. It's a beautiful city. I might have had my issues with some of the things that went on or whatever, but this fireworks thing really drives me crazy, and I think that, I have a store in Anaheim, California, and we really have to watch, we have to have extra protection because we have a big driveway, and it's amazing the situations you run into there as far as the people shooting off the fireworks. They don't care where they go, they just want a place where you authorize fireworks, and that's a great opportunity for them to come in and shoot off a few. So I think this is really an issue you have to think about. You don't have the police and the fire backups to take care of the situation. They have their work cut out. They have a shift of people. They're not putting on 10 more firemen that evening to handle Villa Park for their fireworks. So I think these are issues that you really need to think about, and I'd be willing to answer any questions you have. I don't want to expand on your great job you did up here, but I just strictly against it, there's a lot of people in the city against it. I guess I probably get a few more phone calls than maybe the average person, so. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Bill.
Councilman Fessenali, what a great job you did on the foundation. I'm very, very proud of you, and I look to see bigger and better things there, and I wanna be part of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Just a quick comment is, working for the fire department for 28 years, I can tell you, they do put a lot of extra fire units on the streets on the Fourth of July. It's a very busy night. As you know, in Villa Park, we have not allowed them here for ages and ages and ages, and I can tell you, people do them anyways. And we do have a lot of extra engines out and people out patrolling, and I know the police department does as well, so they are out there looking because people do things. And this just makes it legal this year for them to do them, and with all the guidelines we have down in the one-year trial, and taking them out of the backyard, which is not safe, and putting them in the street, which is safe, under parental control. And as Mayor Protem Barnett had mentioned, this is optional. The residents don't have to do them if they don't wanna do them. If they don't want their children around them, they just don't do them. But other people on their street will choose, I imagine, to do them, and they may invite a few neighbors over to have some food and a little barbecue and do their fireworks like a lot of us grew up doing as kids. So anyways, those are my comments.
Yeah, and I think when you look at the cleanup project, we were talking about, nobody cleans up after some of the things redoing the city, which is true, but one of the areas[1771.02] that I was very concerned with, being a council person, was what's our, what do we pay for all this cleanup? And, and people don't realize that in this city, that every time we have a function, the parades and all the other things, we've got a crew that, the Halloween event is a prime example. I think it takes our people, and you've got two people in the, uh, maintenance area, that take a long time and a lot of money is spent, which we did not recover, as I heard your comments tonight, and, and maybe there's a lot of other monies we don't recover also. So, I think that's an area that you really got to look at, and I think you'll see that when you have the fireworks issue, there's going to be a lot of cleanup.
Yeah, this, this is part of the trial. Um, I, I do believe it won't be as big of an issue as we think due to the fact that it'll be in front of their own homes, and I would imagine they will clean up their own homes.
I, I'd disagree with you on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
It looks like we've got about twenty-four hours of street, street sweeping essentially budgeted in here based on three stands, too.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council, my name is Maury Dem, I'm with Phantom Fireworks, and, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself and my company to the city. Scott Paxton, who's with me, is the account manager that'll be handling, uh, the city of Villa Park, should we be lucky enough to get some of the groups. Just to make a couple comments, Phantom was the exclusive vendor in Huntington Park last year that did a two-year trial basis. It was extremely successful. As a matter of fact, fire and police were vehemently against it, and as it turned out, the statistics showed that they had less calls through fire and police this past season than they had in previous years. There was one injury, and it was with, uh, somebody with, uh, illegal fireworks, which is something that Safe and Sane fireworks helps to eliminate. When it's made, uh, safe, and I'd like to describe Safe and Sane also, the previous mayor, uh, spoke about rockets. Nothing we sell goes up in the air. Safe and Sane is, uh, ten feet high, they spark, they fizzle, they crackle, nothing goes over a three-foot radius. So, when we call them a Safe and Sane, there's a reason, and they are Safe and Sane. The way to keep them Safe and Sane is for the adults to be responsible and not let their grandchildren or two-year-olds play with them. Just like you wouldn't let a two-year-old on a trampoline by himself. So, uh, from a safety standpoint, from my experience, throughout, uh, Southern California and the state, two-hundred-and-fifty-some-odd cities do allow the sale, uh, it's usually, generally, most often, a positive experience. It retains the money in the city for the charities, and the money is substantial that they do raise. And, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, oh, just real quick, I know one of the speakers earlier mentioned that he probably wasn't that much money the charities would make. Do you have just a ballpark, absolute rounded guess of what a charity might make?
The city of Huntington Beach had ten stands. Now, there's a lot more population in a much larger city, and they're surrounded by fireworks cities also. Fireworks are sold in Westminster, they're sold in Costa Mesa. The average, uh, group in Huntington Beach earned anywhere between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars.
Wow.
From the sale.
Yeah.
A four-day sale of fireworks. What the response would be in Villa Park, we won't know until it happens, but, uh...
They earn it, was that clear?
Clear, yeah, after expenses. Uh, so, a- again, it depends on the location, it depends on the turnout from the folks, and generally speaking, uh, the people that come, that are going to buy Safe and Sane fireworks in Villa Park are going to be the residents of Villa Park.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I have a question or a question, I'm going to call it. You know, this, there's apparently been a bidding out here to acquire access to the Ralph parking lot by basically paying Ralph's for the right to sell it, okay? And I understand that, I don't know where that ended up, in the fifteen thousand dollar range or something. You know, I would like to ask that you companies not do that, and let me tell you why. Because any of that money comes out of there to pay Ralph's, the commercial enterprise to access the parking lot, comes right out of the charities. And part of the motivation to do this was to take the money that's being spent all in the surrounding communities and at least capture it here for the benefit of the community, since we're going to have to put up with the fireworks anyway, whether we legalize them or not, they're going to be here. So, by doing that, we just pulled fifteen thousand dollars out of the charities, and just so you know, Ralph's doesn't control the whole parking lot. The school, the school is also another location. So, in, in my opinion, it's not going to be effective. I- i- if that happens, there probably won't be a stand in the Ralph's parking lot, it'll be in another segment. So, I would ask that you, I think Phantom got the bid on that, I would like to ask that Phantom let, if you've committed a contract arrangement with Ralph's, that you let them off the hook, and let's see if, I think there's going to be, I'm guessing there's going to be a representative designated to act and represent all the charities in dealing with the fireworks entities. And I would like to request that you work with that person in conjunction with the other fireworks group, and see if we can't come up with something that makes more sense, that we're not just spinning off money to commercial entities to try and get a monopoly so that we can get the stand, and essentially depriving the charities of the money, which was part of the motivation and reasoning behind the ordinance. It kind of circumvents the purpose of it, and I can tell you, in my opinion, it won't happen anyway. If you capture Ralph's, it's not going to matter, my guess is there won't be a stand there, there, in that event. So, that's my request, I'm happy to talk to you about it more, probably don't need to do it here, um, but I, I really hate to see that money diverted from the charities for that reason.
Well, the, uh, money paid for a property is a shared expense between the fireworks company and the nonprofit group, so the nonprofit group isn't going to, uh, bear the whole cost of the property, it doesn't work that way.
No, but the...
The way to control, excuse, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the way it was done in Huntington Beach, they, the city did an RFP, a request for proposal. And the, the, the main, uh, advantage to doing something like that is, the company that does get the business is able to control the price of real estate. We proposed, the city of Fullerton has allowed fireworks this year, uh, my company proposed that to the city of Fullerton, that they do an RFP process, and it was voted down three to two. And we made it extremely clear, your point is very well taken, that when you start a bidding process for properties, that's what happens, and it gets out of control, and the landlords are the ones that make the money. However, you didn't do that here in the city, perhaps going forward, if you find that this year is a, uh, a success, and you want to go forward, you might want to put that out as an RFP for the future, and have one fireworks company control, uh, the city, uh, they control the cost of the real estate, and it makes a big difference. As far as this year is concerned, there, there's only one shopping center in the city, so I don't know where else you would put a fireworks stand, other than in the shopping center.
Okay, first of all, it wasn't contemplated that there would be any payment for the real estate use, it was contemplated the charities would take care of that and arrange that, and there would be no cost, and the revenue would thus go to the charities, not to the commercial enterprises. Number two, Ralph's doesn't own the entire parking lot. Number three, there's a school property, and I, I, I think I can assure you that if the, 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 if, if, if a significant sum is allocated to the Ralph's entity, the prospects of you having a stand on that location are probably radically diminished. That's just my opinion. It's not, it's not, not the council talking here. I think you will find that if you've tied up a bunch of money for the Ralph's location, my guess is before this is said and done, there won't be a stand on that location. So, I would like to see this structured amicably, where the charitable organizations make the revenue, and we don't have a bidding process, and a bunch of money go into commercial entities to try and capture the business.
Yeah, I, I might suggest that we take this conversation offline, it's really kind of a little different than actually what we're voting on.
Right.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, that, uh, the, the location of where the stand goes would be up to the temporary permit stand holder and, and between that and a property owner, and, and personally, I would not want to get involved in, in that negotiation of...
Well, we were told...
The share of profits.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to... Uh, we were told, uh, that there were going to be three stands in the city, one at the school, two on this property, that's what we were told. So, that's, I, I mean, if there were four or five...
Who told you that? Who told you that?
The, uh, your staff at the city hall.
Because that had not really been determined.
Yeah, it might have been premature. Well, again, I would suggest we discuss these little details off...
Well, I'm available.
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions, guys? We, it looks like we have another speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Kay Rogers, I live in one-oh-five-eight-two Frederick Drive. I've lived here for almost forty years. My family and I used to totally enjoy the fireworks. We loved them, we were very disappointed when they went away. I can see the arguments on both sides. The city decided years ago not to do it anymore, we've managed to survive without that in our Fourth of July, uh, activities. Obviously, there's a differing opinion in the people that live here. And, um, as, as a, as an example, I attended the Women's League Board meeting yesterday, and, um, about twenty people are on the board that attended, and almost every one of them did not want fireworks. And, um, I had thought that somebody was going to communicate with the city on that point. Did nobody call?
Uh, I spoke to Ann Stefani.
Okay.
She's the president this year?
Yes, yes. So, I don't want to, I don't want to walk on her toes, but I was, I wasn't sent here to say something, and I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I think you're going to have a big discrepancy in the, how the people in Villa Park, uh, respond to this. And I know you, you took a, a small poll. I didn't even take a poll, I just sat there and listened to it, and I thought, hmm, I kind of like them. But yet, I can see the danger of them, and I think that it would be wise to take some kind of vote. I don't know how you would do it now, it's, uh, fireworks the Fourth of July this year.
Yeah.
Maybe we've gone too far, far to take a vote, maybe we can put it off till next year. All I'm saying is, you've got a lot of people that are going to be unhappy, because they really, a lot of them don't want fireworks. And I think the problem with Safe and Sane is not the Safe and Sane, the problem is, it draws people in with the illegal fireworks. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the council, my name's Eileen DeSantis. I think I've sent each one of you a letter, I think my daughter Jeannie also sent you a letter too, and in the letter, we, um, expressed our opinion on the Safe and Sane so-called fireworks. Excuse me, it sounds good, but I'm going to tell you a little story. In nineteen eighty-seven, Villa Park banned fireworks, for a good reason. My kids, I live on James Circle, and above me is Valley, okay? My kids are playing with, I don't even know if it was a Pickle Pete, it was some little fireworks, it shot off, landed on that hillside, and burst into flames. And the fire department was called out, it could have gotten worse. So, I mean, you take a little thing like that little teeny firecracker that, that got away, and you can imagine, in the city of Villa Park, what that's going to do. I mean, we live in a very small little city, and we just really have to be very, very careful about our, some people have shingle roofs, still. Uh, we have been very dry lately, so we're going to have fires and all kinds of things happening. The mess, I mean, um, I, I think in my letter, I expressed very much traffic and everything that's going to happen here. I have here a petition signed by my neighbors that surround me, who also are against the fireworks. So, um, I'm going to give you this petition so that you can have it, and I think all of you have my, excuse my voice, I lost it somewhere. So, those are the letters that, um, from my neighbors.
Thank you very much. Okay, any, oh, here we go, one other comment coming up.
You know, I think it's, it's good to have fireworks. I worked in the city of San Ana as a school teacher, and a lot of, you know, as the budgets are called or cut, the only way that some of these programs in the school can function is by fireworks. The sale. Football program, we made over forty-five thousand dollars, one school, okay? If you don't have these programs, and especially where I was teaching, I was teaching with the, the gang bangers and the illegals and everybody else, but these are the kids and the parents that supported the fireworks, because they worked as a family. But if you take the fireworks away from these kids, they're not going to have anything to fall back on. The clubs aren't going to have any money, the football program's not going to have any football, basketball's not going to have any basketball. Fireworks does a great job for many different things at school that the school cannot provide. And I taught for fifty years, so I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Sir, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
I don't live in Villa Park.
Okay.
My kids went to Villa Park.
There you go.
My name is Ed Bane.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Uh, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll move back to the council members for any final comments. The council members?
I'm, I'm teetering on making this comment, but I think maybe I will. The list that was passed up of people objecting to the use of the fireworks, I'm not going to mention any names, but I happen to know that at least one, if not more, of those families utilizes Safe and Sane fireworks in Villa Park at present, so...
Yikes.
For what it's worth.
Yeah. Well, there's no question, we know a lot of residents do it already. So, we, we know that, that's a, that's a given.
Set them off and then sign the petition.
Any further comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I have some comments about this. With regard to the, uh, it's a very touchy question about the non-residents coming into the, coming into the city, I think that's, that's a well-founded, uh, thing we have to consider. I mean, the way it reads, we, basically, people can almost, uh, go into an intersection, stop and fire off fireworks, uh, because that's not in front of anybody's house, really, it's all, it's a shared one, a little different. But, uh, there seems to be a lot of dissension amongst the residents, and I think we would be well-founded maybe to, uh, look at this a little more closely, and I think, uh, that's something we should highly consider as a council. I mean, I know that we have a lot of folks that, I enjoyed many bottle rockets and Roman candle fights with my brothers, but I was in a, in a farm country, much different, it wasn't really a tinderbox like it is here at times. And, uh, but also realizing, everyone's talking about the fireworks of many years ago, which weren't safe and sane.
That's true.
And we're not talking about sparklers here either.
Yeah, they're not allowed.
Uh, that's burnt fingers, a lot of burnt fingers, I know that, I've had them myself. But, um, the, it's something I, I, I would do wish that our kids could enjoy and, and see, but I, I do see the hesitation about everyone wanting to keep everyone absolutely away from harm, no question about that, and also the mess that it, that it procreates when, 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 the next day. Um, I, I think maybe we need a little more study on the, um, cleanup aspect. I think it takes, how long does it take the street sweeper to sweep our city? Is it five days?
Um, once every other week, so I'd say a, a good eight-hour...
Is that the entire city they, they do?
Entire city. We have seventy, thirty-five, uh...
Okay.
Straight miles to seventy plain miles.
Yeah. I also think that the comment about taking a vote of the citizens is well-founded, because obviously, you know, we had the first reading last month, and now we have this one, which if we vote positively for the, uh, ordinance tonight, then it would become effective later on, thirty days later. But I think there's a lot of more things coming out of the woodwork right now, and so I, I caution my colleagues in that regard, that we, uh, think about this quite carefully. We haven't had it for several years, twenty years or so now, what's one more year? We have to think about that. And, uh, the money part, as far as the schools, Mr. Bane is well-taken. Uh, we, that's one of the main impetus's we were considering, to have, uh, some of the nonprofits here, so they could raise money and of course contribute, almost all of that, if not almost entirely all of it, back to the schools and local organizations for children. So, your, your, everyone's comments are, are well-taken, and that's the comment I have about that, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, any other comments?
I'd just like to briefly respond to Greg's comment. The cleanup, Greg, I think, based on if it's three stands, we've essentially funded something like, uh...
Three thousand.
Twenty-four hours of, of...
The sweeper is, uh, I think the emergency call-out rate, which this would be, is about eight-five dollars an hour. So, you're looking at, you know, ten hours, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I think that would be more than that.
So, so, right now, we get it, and we don't have a budget to clean up how we would. The other issue, and I, I have to say, Greg, I agree with what you said, what really throws me over is, this is a one-year pilot. If this were a permanent statute, a permanent ordinance, I would be thinking about it, and I'd be doing a lot more. It's a one-year pilot. It's a one-year pilot, and this, to me, is a way to find out. And I don't know a better way to test this and see how it works. And we're kinda down the road here, and I hate to go back to ground zero, I haven't heard anything that's really new, or inspiring, or has given me any great pause or concern, really nothing here I've heard tonight, that I hadn't considered and heard before, or thought about myself before I even got involved with this.
Yeah, that almost sounds like a motion.
Oh, no.
Unless somebody's got a, unless somebody else has got some comments, I'll make the motion.
You can make the motion, and we can still have comments.
I haven't, I have a few more comments.
In a minute, we're still discussing. Greg, go ahead.
Yes, I think the issue is that, as far as I'm concerned right now, is that a lot of folks have come forward now with a lot more concerns, and I think they're well-founded. Also, it is a test pilot, I agree. But I think, at this juncture, tonight, we've heard a lot more than just a few people writing a letter. And as a matter of fact, some of the letters that we received tonight weren't even regarding fireworks at all. There were other issues. So, maybe it is up to a vote of the citizens here. I mean, that would be the true test. I mean, we are representatives of our city, and if there's a point where we get to that we cannot decide, then we should throw it back to the citizens, or drop it altogether. Now, I had the other issue that I have, that I didn't mention a minute ago, is that I think that Lieutenant Gunzel may need to step up some extra police, if they're even available for a holiday night like that, and the hours that they have it. So, that's, I think there's a lot of well-founded hesitation here, and I think I'll be quiet from here.
Just a quick comment, one of the problems with the vote is, of course, it costs the city money to go to the polls and do a vote. The other fact that we looked at is, the other cities that did put it to a vote, was an amazing result of, to the passing, obviously. I agree with Mayor Protem Barnett, this is a one-year trial. If it doesn't work for us this year, we ain't gonna do it next year. So, that's...
You know, I have to say something about that, because you keep talking about that. It will take about three years for the community that's extending beyond Villa Park to get the word. And that's when your problems will start coming.
Then we trial it next year as well.
No, because now it's on the books, and this thing is gonna shut down, you know, at the end of October, or whatever date we change. So, I, the one-year, no.
How does it shut down?
Well, in October is when we have to take an action, correct? After we go through this one-year trial. I don't believe you're gonna see the full impact of things in the what, the first year.
So, in other words, it's gonna work the first year.
I think it'll probably go fairly well the first year.
It might work the second year.
But the problem is, is what you're setting in motion, that's pretty difficult to draw in. And quite frankly, one of the comments that Mr. Bain spoke to was actually in the Orange County Grand Jury's report, that the cities that allowed it, the sports organizations and the different, you know, charities became dependent upon it, and did not do anything else. And so, when you've got, you know, assuming we're gonna do that well, forty grand, and that's, I think, a stretch, but assuming you do that well, then they allow all their other creative fundraising ideas out, you know, to go out the window, and a few years down the road, they've got nothing else. That was specifically outlined in this grand jury report. You know, when I look at the grand jury report, when I look at the grand jury in general, they do a lot of investigation, and a lot of looking into things, they're independent, they usually don't have a, you know, a bone to pick either direction. And the things that I've read in this, you'll remember, when you first brought the idea, Brad and Rick, you brought the idea forward, I thought, okay, it's worth exploring. But all I had to do was read this grand jury report to realize, we are opening a can of worms that we just don't need in the city. We just don't need it. My biggest concerns are, now you said Huntington Beach, and all the cities around it, they all have fireworks. It's not as difficult there. Villa Park, however, will be an island. We're very small. We are not Huntington Beach. You can't spread out or go to the beach and shoot 'em off over the ocean. None of Orange does, and there are gangs, you know, and groups of kids that'll come in from Orange when they get the word, and buy their fireworks. None of Anaheim, none of Anaheim Hills, none of Tustin, none of the people who live in the unincorporated areas, none of them. Will they all come here to buy? Yes, but it's illegal for them to shoot them off where they live. So, what are they gonna do? And it's a simple matter, just walk over the border. You know, we've got a couple of the fireworks providers that have come here, that came out of the woodwork almost immediately, they're salivating, you know?
There's only two providers, of course, they're gonna salivate.
Well, yeah, exactly. And one of those is the one that told us that it was put to a vote in all twenty-five cities. They were not talking about Orange County. They weren't even talking about just California. They were talking about twenty-five cities and an extended regional area, and they're gonna tell you whatever it is they think they need to tell you, to help get you on board with this. You know, I didn't have an opinion one way or the other. But then I started, after I read this Orange County Grand Jury Report, I started thinking, boy, this is, this is not a good situation. Then I didn't know, you know, the difference between the types of fireworks, so I Googled Piccolo Pete. Okay, what is that? And of course, it's so easy, and they had a video, and I clicked on, and it showed this little thing sitting on the ground going poof, 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 shot up maybe five or six feet in the air, it was no big deal. And then in the very next clip, it showed kids how to strap it onto a toy car, and send it like a projectile down the street. It showed them how to take it and shoot it. And the kids, you think our kids are not on YouTube, looking at this stuff all the time? Oh, yes, they are, way more than I am. So, they're very clever and very creative, and the Villa Park kids and the surrounding kids, they are going to be, they're gonna be looking at this. You named all these different locations where they can't do it. And as Mr. Macaloney pointed out, we have one and a half sheriffs. So, how is this one and a half sheriffs gonna be everywhere, all at once, making sure that people are not in prohibited areas? Well, they're not gonna be able to. They're simply not gonna be able to. This is all about the money. I can see that that's what this is about. And sometimes, you have to set that desire for dollars aside, and just use your brain for common sense, and realize, is the price worth it? I'm hearing from nothing but people who are opposed to it. I've had a couple of people that had no opinion, no opinion whatsoever. They could've cared one way or the other. But for the most part, I'm hearing from nothing but people telling me to do something about it, like I can do. I said, I can't do anything about it, you know? This is, I'm one person, and everybody else thinks it's a great idea. Brad, you're a firefighter. You had a little firefighter helmet on your campaign signs. Everybody assumes that you're not going to take an action like this during June and July, which is the driest, hottest, most fire-prone time of the year, isn't it? I've heard from a lot of people in Mayberry Ranch, and I know we don't care what people in, you know, other cities, we don't represent them, is what I'm saying. They are really upset, they're like, I said, they were complaining about how many times they've already been evacuated, and what are we thinking? Because it's gonna impact them as well, because it doesn't take much for a fire to go off. I've heard from so many people, all ages, there's a woman who's my age, whose mother lives in Garden Grove. She called me, she said, my mother will not leave the house for the Fourth of July, because she's afraid her house is gonna catch on fire. And she said, I will go, she won't, she wants her to come over, of course, and be with the family, she won't do it. She'll go over on the Fifth of July, and she said, you would not believe what it looks like. The streets are just covered, there's junk all over her yard, ash, every, it was just a disaster. And you can read right here in the grand jury report. Safety officials stated that roving gangs from, come from as far away as San Diego to ignite illegal fireworks in the five Orange County cities that, at that time, were allowing fireworks, all the while masking their activities by integrating with large crowds detonating legal fireworks. These are safety officials, are they gonna lie to the grand jury? No! You have to, did you read this report? I'm sorry, for my money, it's not worth money. It's just not worth it. And I, it's not worth it. And I think as more people find out what you're doing, the more upset they're gonna be.
Yeah, let me just respond, Deborah.
They trust you, they trust you.
Frank, and I, and I, I earn their trust. You know, frankly, what I just heard, my perception, is a panic campaign.
It's not about panic.
It was a public relations panic campaign, because the reality is, number one, that the use is growing. Fullerton just approved it.
I know Fullerton did.
Have any of the cities that didn't back down, Deborah?
And I spoke to the gentleman who ran that.
That's in Orange County.
I understand that, it's not that, it's not that many.
None of them have backed down, they all like it.
Let me finish, have I sat here forever listening?
It's not twenty-five cities in Orange County, don't misstate it.
Correct.
Okay.
I sat and listened through all that, with a tendency to wanna respond to multiple times. Use is growing, Fullerton now allows it. The one that was most concerned when we first went through this was Deanna. She's the only one that took the initiative to go out and call another city that had it for extended periods, and said, I wanna know what problems you're having, I wanna hear all the problems, because I'm concerned about this. And they said, we're good, okay? I just finished hearing you tell me, I think it'll probably work the first year.
I think it probably, we will have, we will have minimum number of problems the first year, I do believe that.
And that's fine, so you know what, let's deal with this.
The first year.
I don't see, yeah, the first year, I don't, I don't see the objective problems here, okay? When you start taking this issue at a time, you started talking about the trash. We don't have trash pickup, and people use these all over Villa Park now.
That's right.
This gives us a fund to actually go through with a street sweeper and clean the whole thing up. So, I can address every one of these issues, one by one. I think it's an overregulation issue, frankly, and I think it's time to put, to cool it on the regulation a little bit, and let people take some responsibility, and, you know, and deal with this. We all grew up with it, I, you know, I enjoyed it, I don't want people to get hurt, but I think people have to take a little responsibility. If your concern is that, oh, I think it'll be good this year, probably, but it may get bad in future years, then let's deal with that issue. Even you, with this spiel you just gave us, tell me you think it's probably gonna be okay this year. So, let's take it from, let me finish.
I do believe that, I do believe that.
Rick has a floor, please.
I gave you all your time.
You're arguing with me, and what I'm trying to do is...
I'm addressing your issues.
Deborah, let him talk, please, he can talk when he's done. Go ahead, Rick.
Okay. So, my way to respond to that is to say, fine, then let's put a sunset on this annually. I don't care. Let's annually sunset this ordinance, and have council address it annually.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And if this comes, becomes a problem, we can address it, okay?
I'm the first one to kill it if it's a problem.
You're telling me, you just indicated a minute ago, you really don't expect a problem this year. So, fine, let's try it this year. And you know what, maybe there won't be a problem next year, and people will get to enjoy it, we'll pull a little government regulation off the books, okay, as a Republican, and we'll get people out of their backyards and cubbies where they now have to put it off, we'll get it out in the street with hoses, where, you know, and monitored, with some regulation, and we'll sunset this thing. And if it becomes a problem, we'll address it. But I'm just not in favor of all this regulation, absent a real issue. And Deanna made the call, and there was no problem. The rep that was here earlier said, twenty-five cities that had it, they decided to put it to ballot, and all of them reenacted, I think it was California, but I may be wrong, I'm not gonna say that.
All right, the guy who's gonna make all the money, and you're gonna rely on that.
If it's the whole country, I don't care.
Don't rely on that.
All right, if you wanna take that out of the equation, that's fine.
You need to.
That's fine, let's take it out of the equation, all right? We'll go with Deanna's call. The bottom line is, it's growing. Fullerton just approved it, okay? So, I think this...
None of them have taken it back, they like it.
No, so this fear campaign, I think, is unwarranted. Let's see where it goes. I even have a response to the Piccolo Pete issue. The gentleman that testified, if you will, for lack of a better word, at the prior hearing, indicated that there had been a problem with Piccolo Pete, they'd re-engineered him. So, I just don't see this fear campaign now. If it turns out there's problems, we don't like it, hey, I live in this community, I'm the kind of hurt little children, and I don't want problems, I don't want people roaming, you know, I don't want these either. I'm gonna be the first one that turns around and says, well, that was a nice try, enough of that. Let's sunset it annually. If your concern is that it's not this year, and that therefore, this year will go well, and then next year won't be as good, now we'll have this ordinance, and we'll have to deal with, okay? Small community, easy to change, but for the time being, let's sunset it annually, I don't care. And if there's problems, then let's readdress it. Why stifle all these people that would like to have it, and are gonna do it anyway? We all know, it's all over Villa Park every year. So, let's get it out of the backyards, let's control it, let's get, let's get the fees collected, let's get the streets swept, let's let the money that's being spent by all these people all over Villa Park that use it every year, let's get their money in Villa Park, and not send it to Santa Ana, and Fullerton, and wherever else it's going, and let's see how this goes. We're gonna have these anyway, whether you like 'em or not. Let's collect the money, let's budget for the cleaning, let's sunset this thing annually, and let councils deal with it, and see where it goes.
All right, first of all...
All right, here we go, Deborah, you're next, and then Deanna. Go ahead.
First of all, this is not a fear campaign. This is a point-counterpoint, if you will. You've got to look at all of the potentials, you cannot just pretend like they're not there. There is the little matter of representing the people, and when you have enough people telling you they don't want something, or they're opposed to something, I know you weren't elected, but I was. And so, I have people that expect me to listen to them, and there are a lot of them. I'm amazed at how many people...
You can vote no, Deborah, do your job.
Well, here's the problem, Rick will, and he's done this on multiple occasions with multiple issues, say, I haven't heard anybody complain. You said that on this issue when you started off. You know why you don't hear anyone complain? You don't listen. And that is a problem. We have a responsibility to listen to the residents. We represent them, and we're supposed to be making decisions on their behalf, and I'm sure they never thought in a million years that a firefighter would bring something like this forward.
All right.
We have six thousand people in this city. I have about fifteen people signed objection to it, and some of these people use safe and sane fireworks annually that are on the list. So, that doesn't impress me out of six thousand people. I talk to a lot more than this.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, Deborah, we all know how that works.
I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that.
You know how that works, too.
I'm very well aware of that, and I love the Fourth of July, and I grew up with fireworks too. That is not the issue here.
All right, let's move on. Deanna, do you have some comments?
I have listened, and I've had people call me, and tell me they don't want the fireworks because it's unsafe. But from my perspective, having the youngest children here on the council, and asking the families that have the young children, they are overwhelmed with happiness that they're gonna be able to do fireworks in their own home.
I agree.
And not that they're unresponsible parents, because my children are twelve and eleven, and they've been doing fireworks since they were three, under my supervision. I don't let them do anything dangerous, I think it's a good trial period. The money, from my perspective, has nothing to do with the city. How, how much money somebody makes, does it make any difference? I don't think it should make any difference, we're not doing this to fund the nonprofits, or anything.
That's a side benefit.
Yeah, it's a side note, makes no difference. But I do think that bringing Fourth of July back with fireworks is a positive thing. It has not been a negative item to Costa Mesa, to Santa Ana, to Buena Park, it hasn't been. And that's really all I can say, we're responsible people, we have homes that are, you know, worth a million dollars. We're not going to do something that's gonna be dangerous. I have a shake roof on my house. I'm one, I'm still one of those forty people who have the shake roof. You know? I'm careful. And what I'd like to say, when it comes to the YouTube and the Piccolo Pete, oh, yeah, you know what, unfortunately, there are people who are going to take the flowers, which are safe and sane, and they're gonna throw them. I can't stop that. Do they do it? Oh, yeah, they do it a lot, but you can hope that they won't. Sorry.
Okay, can I get a motion on this item? We've beat this one up.
I'll make it. I'll make it.
I'll second it. Oh, I'm sorry. James, you have another comment to make?
Yes, sir.
Make it, make it quick if you would. We still have a lot of items to go over tonight. We didn't bring our sleeping bags tonight, just so you know.
You know, I'm appalled, Rick. I've known you for a while and know your brother and your family. I'm appalled that you're even for this. And same thing with you, Brad, as a, as an ex-fireman.
I am very for it as an ex-fireman. Yes, sir.
And, and you guys are like two dolls saying yes to each other. And I don't mean that disrespect.
Don't know about that.
I love both of you, okay? But I will take you down. You know, you, these two guys right here are violently against this and I'm violent against it. And I, I cannot believe that you wouldn't listen to what Greg said. He just said something that was the most intelligent thing, besides what Debbie, Deborah said, tonight about this. Let's look at this. Let's wait a bit. Let's think about it. You got too much objections. And all you guys are doing is this and that. And Rick, God bless you, man. I, I can't believe the, the arguments you make. It sounds foolish. We might as well, how many people in Villa Park do marijuana? We might as well have marijuana station here then. I mean, why would you say they're doing it anyway? That, as a lawyer, there's no way, as a lawyer, there's no way you would take that position on any case.
It's prevalent. It's all over Villa Park everywhere. It's, that's the truth.
I, I think...
I can attest it is as an fireman.
These people that signed the petition.
You probably got three votes here and I think it's, it, it's appalling that you would consider it and you got two, I think, again. And what Greg said is what you should be thinking about. And I think the people of Villa Park agree with that. I'm not a very political correct guy, but I'm telling you, you two guys have gotta change some of the positions you take because people are unhappy with it, my friends. I love you guys, but this is crazy. We got a city that like, Deborah said, it's a little thing. And you know what? Everyone's gonna come to this city to do fireworks, 'cause it's illegal other places. Hey, let's go to Villa Park. It's illegal.
Jim, Jim, they'll, they'll buy them here, maybe if it's closer to their town. They're gonna take them home. People buy them in Santa Ana. They don't set them off in Santa Ana. They bring them home.
Forget the money, Rick. Forget the money. That's all you're talking about.
It was, that's a collateral issue. When this came up, the money wasn't even an issue.
Yeah, but the money is all I've been...
That's what you said was the main driver.
All it is is, yeah, it's all I've been...
It's a collateral benefit, but it's a significant benefit.
You twist and turn things around. You say one thing one minute and one thing the next.
Deborah, the revenue was not even, was not even an issue when this was...
You have 20 women who are on the executive board of the Women's League talking and a message was delivered that they all were just talking and they are all opposed to it? You didn't, you've never talked to any of them? I haven't. I found out about it from Jared.
I've talked to some Women's League people that didn't make the meeting that supported.
Okay.
Let, let's move on.
The best place for safe and sane fireworks is in the backyard where the parents are watching the kids, not out on the street. Because it's, and that's what's gonna happen.
Did you read the ordinance? They have to be out there with them.
I know, but you, you, see what you, you just passed another rule that shows it's not safe and sane.
It's more dangerous to do it in the backyard than it is out on the street.
Well, listen to this man on the end here, what he said. Let's wait on this. Let's take a vote and say, "We're gonna talk to the people." You don't have to go have a, a formal vote. You can take a survey. You know, you've got enough people that'll take a survey for you without any cost. And this city is not broke. You talk like it's broke. We need this money.
Let's make an intelligent decision.
But I disagree with what this gentleman said. All he's interested in is the money of selling his fireworks. No disrespectful, sir. But I'm just telling you, that's all they wanna do is sell fireworks. They don't care how it is. Sell them, sucker. So, you know?
Thank you, Jim.
Greg?
We have studied this for two months, Jim. It's not like we're making a rash decision tonight. Sir, one more time, real quick.
Yeah, just one point. The issue seems to be safety. And, you know, as a fireworks company, and I'll speak for the other company also, we bend over backwards to make sure that our products are safe. We monitor every sale that goes on in these stands. We enforce all the rules of every ordinance in every city. The last thing that we want is for anybody to get hurt.
Ah, it'll kill your business if that happened also.
The usage of fireworks over the last 15, 20 years has gone up enormously and the rate of accidents have gone down 90%. And the reason they've gone down so much is because the industry polices itself. And the industry takes it very seriously. We don't want anybody to get hurt.
Right.
And if you talk to the rank and file, the fire department and policemen, they buy fireworks. And they know what we sell. The idea is to eliminate the illegal fireworks and, and not make that the issue. That's all I can say. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. All right. I think we had a motion and a second, did we not?
No.
We haven't. And because this is an ordinance, we have to take these separately and you have to read the title of the ordinance. So we can't just say, "Yep," or, one by one, if whoever...
Okay.
I just want to say, I think this is the most intelligent, informed way, this one-year pilot, to get a feel for this and make an intelligent decision on it.
Right.
You know, people are sprayed all over the place on it. Let's test it for a year and let's find out and make an intelligent decision instead of doing this.
I agree. Yeah. All right. So it looks like we need a motion on ordinance 2013-574. I'm happy to make it.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to approve a second reading and adopt ordinance number 2013-574, adding Article 11-2 to Chapter 11 of the Villa Park Municipal Code relating to safe and sane fireworks.
Marys?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the next ordinance is 2013-574. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Jared?
Uh, the motion is to hold a public hearing, introduce and approve a first reading of ordinance 2013-575, repealing Section 11-1.3.59 of the Villa Park Municipal Code relating to safe and sane fireworks and scheduling a second reading adoption at the April 23, 2013 city council meeting. Uh, Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Marys?
Yes.
And the last item is resolution number 2013-3232. Can I get a motion on that?
Moved.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second, Jared.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is to adopt the $1,000 regulatory fee on temporary permit stand holders. Uh, Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Marys?
Yes. Thank you, guys. That was a very spirited, um, discussion, debate, whatever you want to call it. Um, all I, all I can tell the public is, as a fireman, I've thought very hard and clear about this. This is not a rash decision. We've thought for two months very hard about this. We've looked at all the ins and outs. I do hear what the people are saying. I also agree that if it don't work in one year, we're done. We are, safety is number one. Believe me, all the, I, I'm not gonna sit here and reiterate everything again. We'll try it for the year and if it doesn't work, we'll change. I can promise you that.
Can we have a five-minute recess, please?
I don't know about that. Well, you, if it works, you bet we'll let it go. If the people, we get good feedback, they like it, of course, we're gonna let it. We're gonna do it again. But we'll be discussing it again also.
Jim, it's always, it's always on the table. This is a small community.
You better believe it.
This community's like this, you know, it's, it's, it's one small group. And if there's problems and there's a legitimate basis concern where it doesn't really do any sense... I'll be the first one to nix this ordinance.
I'll be in line right there.
If this doesn't work, I'll be right there with you.
Okay.
Deborah asked for a break.
We're done with this item. Deborah asked for a break.
I'm asking for a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. Okay.
That was a long five minutes.
Okay, it's alright, we're good. We deserve it.
Alright, we are back. Let's see, we have items five through eleven, and that is our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to have polled tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Eight and ten.
Eight and ten, okay. Alrighty, can I get a motion on the balance, please?
I'll move to the other.
Okay, we have a motion, and we got a second. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. Councilwoman Polly, number eight.
Number eight is an update on the progress related to our emergency temporary moratorium, and I just kind of wanted you to give the community an update. People have certainly been interested about some things that have happened in town center, and I would specifically request that you highlight the second paragraph under background for the benefit of the community.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, at the end of last year, the council enacted an urgency ordinance to put a hold on all applications that were non-retail, non-restaurant uses in our town center. This allowed staff the ability to review our code. We get a lot of questions about what's going to happen when we come back to council, and I'm sure sometimes it's just a matter of even just how we communicate, but some folks believe that we're going to vote on the moratorium. Actually, the moratorium was already voted on and was approved and is in place. What we're going to be doing next is staff will be bringing forward to the council recommendations on changing or making some refinement to our CN commercial zone. Our CN zone is what manages our town center. It provides direction as to how buildings can get built, what types of uses we have here in the town center, and how the uses operate. One of the things that is important to note is that the city does not control the types of uses that business owner leases to. We do in the manner of we have a list of permitted uses, conditionally permitted uses, and prohibited uses in our code, but of that list, if a property owner should choose to lease to one use over another, the city does not get involved in that private act. The code gives direction as to the types of uses that we feel go together, they work together well, they don't create nuisances for one another. Our code also goes so far as to determine how businesses operate to a certain degree, and by that I mean we manage hours of operation. We try to make sure that if you install lighting on your building, it doesn't spill over onto another building. If you put up a sign, it doesn't block somebody else's sign. So there's this fine line, I would say, in our code that does restrict property rights and how people use their property to a certain degree, that it ensures that you're not infringing on another property owner's rights. So in our second paragraph, we talk about the proposed bank application and the gas station. I know a number of residents have noticed that the gas station has been fenced off, and this, to be very clear, was not an action that was taken by the city. We have no real control over the property itself and how the property owner chooses to use their property, and the decision or the actions that were taken between the property owner and their tenant. What we do manage then is what's happening next. The city did receive an application by Chase Bank, the latter part of last year, requesting to occupy the building that is now currently, or was, the gas station. The city was already moving forward with the moratorium that put a hold on reviewing that application, and we made a commitment to the community and to the property owners and to the council that we would move forward quickly to review the code and make recommendations that would be appropriate. We have held several town hall meetings with the public at large, with the business owners, and with the business operators, and we are almost to a point where we've completed the code review. Essentially, you will receive a redlined version, however, you can imagine that pretty much your whole code will be redlined. There are a number of refinements and issues that we need to address in our CN code. We need to bring it up to date. Some of the issues that I've brought to you each month, we've talked about the hours of operation, we've talked about the height of structures in our center. Also, we have an interesting provision, which is not uncommon for a town center, where you would have setbacks for a property. Usually, this whole center would be one property, and you would have setbacks from adjacent zones and also from the streets, so that you'd have landscaping and proper places for people to walk. Because we have thirteen separate properties in our town center, our code requires that you would have twenty-foot setbacks on all sides of each of those thirteen properties. If you look out in our center today, you can see that clearly we don't have twenty feet on all sides of all of our properties, and frankly, we probably shouldn't. Doesn't make a lot of sense to make alleyways, as I would see it, between some of these properties, and so that's another area that, as we've gone into this code review, we've said, does that make a lot of sense, and do we want to see that as we move forward with our CN zone? So just a little preview of some of the things that we'll be bringing forward. For the public's benefit, the council will review our recommendations, and they may decide that they don't want to make any changes to our code. They think it's fine just the way it is, or they might think that some of our recommendations are great and some of our recommendations are not so great, and they might choose to not accept all of them. Or they might think that we did great work and they'll accept them all. So we're not entirely sure the outcome yet still of the zoning code update. Our next step is to have this preview with the property owners so that we can get additional input from them. Obviously, their input is very important, however, the ultimate decision will be the councils and not the property owners. I don't mean any disrespect in that comment, but we do have several property owners, and they might not all agree on their input as well, and so ultimately, the decision is to the council in general. So in terms of the gas station question, the important thing, I think, to leave with tonight is that the city certainly is saddened to see the gas station not operating at this time, not only because of the use it was, but also because we hate to see buildings vacant and walled off in our town center. However, it is the property owner's right to do as they wish at this point in time. We will move forward with the review with the council in April, and if the decision is made, there's a second action that needs to happen in order for that to be put in place, and then at that time, the moratorium will be lifted, and all applications would move forward per the new code. With that, hopefully, I covered everything. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. Yes?
Great, thank you, Jennifer.
Are the, all applications, would they all have to be resubmitted, because there's a new code, basically?
No, the application wouldn't have to be resubmitted. They may have to make revisions to meet the new code, but it could be in their benefit as well, depending on how some of those changes came across.
But April, I'm sorry, April is when we're going to see it back before this council, and that's when you're going to give a complete report on your recommendations.
That's correct. You'll receive a draft code at that time.
A draft. And so I'm hoping that there is adequate notification to the residents of the community, that that's going to be happening at the April meeting, so that they can tune in or come down here if they want to see the full report themselves, because this is very important to the community, obviously. It matters to them a lot. Thank you for the report, Jennifer.
Any other comments?
Yes. By the way, the meeting with the property owners, is that going to be an open public meeting as well, or is that something that you do in private, or in the?
No, our intention is to get the information out to all of them, and then to hold a meeting the best schedule that we can afford so that as many of them as possible can make it, and yes, we would make that open to the public as well. I don't know that we'll be able to accommodate all of the schedules, but we'll do our very best.
So, but all the meeting times will be posted somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other comments? If not, ask for a motion?
It's just a receive and file, so.
Okay.
I just thought it was important enough for us to pull it off.
Item ten.
And item ten is the fiscal year 2013-14 council goals and work plan. Looks great. We've gone through this. We set some priorities for city staff. I just wanted to, under item two, which is maintaining the city's low crime rate through the promotion of safe community standards and values, I would like you to add, if you could please, strengthen citizen involvement through communication, enhanced neighborhood watch programs, and promotion of the do not solicit registry. I think it fits nicely under two, and I think we need to continue focusing on that, particularly given events that have been happening lately in the surrounding area. Other than, I just pulled it just to make that addition, but is this available for anyone to review online if they'd like to? Jared?
Yes, right now, it is just included as an attachment to tonight's agenda. By the end of the week, we'll have it up in our new, I think we'd call it the blog section of our city's website, where folks can view the work plan and provide comments.
That's wonderful. Have anything else, if anyone else does?
Yeah, one comment. I talked to Jared earlier, and I asked him if, this looks great, as Deborah just mentioned, but I asked if there's some way you could apply some metrics to some of these for measurement, just over a period of time, not necessarily right now, but going forward. I think that would be a good, because typically, what gets measured gets done. And, I mean, even, we have, already have some community watch programs. It's like there's one or two already to go. Maybe we need to expand it to three or four. Just something like that, so we can see a, you know, a metric process. That's all. Thanks.
I have some ideas on that through an Excel spreadsheet, and it's a flexible document, so we can go back and forth a couple times and provide your comments, and we'll tailor it to fit your needs.
Great.
Did a great job of including everything, all the input you get from five of us, and we all think very differently at times. I guess we have to actually approve this, so I'll go ahead and move this.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item twelve, this is new business. At this time, we'll consider resolution 2013-2131, setting April 23, 2013, as the date for a public hearing to determine whether conditions at 10566 Covington Circle constitute a public nuisance. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We first received word of this property, I'd say, in October of last year. At that time, the initial complaint was landscaping, overgrown trees and shrubbery. Since that time, the property has escalated to where it sat, I'd say, last week, which is when we received numerous complaints. Well, we've always received numerous complaints from the individuals on Covington, but the property owner had a heap and a pile of trash and refuse sitting in the front yard of the property. Last week, as we were setting the agenda, we put the item, resolution 2013-3231, on the city council meeting to set the public hearing. Once the agenda was posted, I was combing through the Villa Park News Code a little bit further, and we found a section under Article 6-2 that gives myself, as the city manager, the authority to determine it a public nuisance. So what this does is issue a fifteen-day deadline, as opposed to adopting the resolution, setting a public hearing thirty days later, then giving another thirty days to debate it, which is essentially a sixty-day, ninety-day process. My rec, and I served this notice to clean the premises yesterday Monday. So the property owner has fifteen days to remove all the rubbish and trash from the front yard, side yard, property itself. My recommendation would be to table the resolution, monitor the property for the next fifteen days, and then day sixteen, if it has not been cleaned up. We'd work with the city attorney's office to obtain a warrant, go in there and pick up the pile of garbage and haul it away ourselves. Since that time, we've actually worked a deal with Villa Park Disposal to provide a dumpster, which was delivered today, free of charge, to the property owner, in which he can do it himself.
Wow.
Which was, the underlying concern was the cost of the dumpster and hauling it to the dump, that, you know, it was a $600 charge, and by them waiving that, he's able to take care of it much easier.
If I can add to his statement, what happened is, the day that, it was two weeks ago, there was a compost giveaway over at Villa Park High School, which the disposal company does sponsor. At that time, I met Mr. Wright, who came by through there and indicated to me that there was a refrigerator in front of this particular home. At that time, Villa Park Disposal offered, if we needed a, if they needed any assistance, that they would offer, you know, the disposal service for free.
Great, yeah.
So, kudos, because he was there listening to the conversation. So, I'm glad that that worked out.
How long has he got to fill the dumpster up, Jared, before that disappears? Week?
No time limit, a week. I'm not sure what a typical drop-off is, maybe three days, but Villa Park Disposal says keep it for a week, you know, fifteen days if need be.
Oh.
How long you want, and it's one of the thirty-yard dumpsters, as opposed to that fifteen-yard low one.
Is the refrigerator gone? Anybody know?
I believe we have a picture of the property as it sits as of this morning.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a night-day difference from where it was.
Oh, it's gone, then?
There's still some trash there.
The debris that was left over from his first haul has been moved behind the side yard gate, and that was the issue with getting the dumpster, is so he can get rid of that leftover stuff. That's the idea. Now, we've made it clear to him that he can't put hazmat materials or, you know, all of the typical restrictions, and Villa Park Disposal's given us kind of the leeway to give him a little bit of extra time. Typically, it would be kind of a three-day process, but.
Ryan, why would he put it in the backyard when we have a dumpster in the front yard for him?
Well, he did, we just got the dumpster out there today. They delivered it sometime this afternoon.
We're going to be very vigilant on this fifteen-day?
Oh, yes.
Because that's, you're empowered to do that?
Oh, yes.
Great.
Yeah, essentially, we've already declared it. I, as the city manager, through the Villa Park Municipal Code, have already declared it a public nuisance.
That was good, good research.
Yeah.
Spent out the process. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and open this up to the public, if they have any comments on that.
My name is Dick Walters. I live right across the street from this mess that's been going on for maybe more than six months. That actually goes back a couple years. six months, that actually goes back a couple of years. And when he had a garage sale, and it sat for two weeks out there without any action, he forgot to call in to have a garage sale. So we lived with this for six months. And I just came tonight, I was going to say all the things that I just heard from our fine people over here, which I gave a bad time at different times. What they're doing is what we should be doing. Let's not spend six months to get something done, just do it now, 15 days, 10 days. I don't want to be looking out, I don't want to be complaining about this type of thing. And we had lots of action from the people of my area, which got probably disgusted, looking at that big mess. And I want to thank the city council, and I do thank you guys over there for the manager and assistant manager, because I know I give you some bad times. And I know you got lots of letters from people, and what you saw now with that picture is nothing what you saw a week ago, correct? It's been a mess. It's been like that for, this is a very irresponsible person. I feel sorry for the mother who lives there. She's a handicapped person, and she's, I don't know how long she's going to be around. But he himself is kind of irresponsible. He likes, he has ideas, but he never finishes. He just keeps on going and let it sit. He's done this for the rest of his life. He's not too responsible, but he does live there, and I have to live with it. So I want to thank you guys for everything you're doing, and I like what you're doing about this 15 days. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Anyone else speak on this item in the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any final comments and/or a motion?
I have a question. If we take this, if we table this, and he doesn't complete the work that he needs to do, you know, I understand that it's moved behind the fence and what, covered in a tarp right now, let's say he doesn't, does that mean we start from square one?
No, Day 16, with the warrant, we'd have the authority to enter the property and remove the debris ourselves. The city attorney and I were just discussing, if we do table this, let me take a step back. This is a notice to clean the premises. It doesn't address all of the code violations, chipping paint, lack of landscaping, overgrown trees. So we, we could adopt this ordinance and, you know, go down parallel paths. But the way it sits today, if he does not remove all the rubbish from the property, Day 16, we'd go in there and remove it ourselves.
So basically, the 15-day notice thing was a special thing, you know, historically to use for, for stuff that could cause rats, or something like that. So we tied this into that. What was on the agenda is sort of the standard nuisance procedure. You know, we were just talking, you know, just do both, maybe, and keep it on path and in case something happens. Because this is more procedurally formulaic as to giving us options for assessments and stuff like that. We can under the other one as well, but it's, it's more general, so maybe that would be more prophylactic and best.
Yeah, I'm thinking, based on some experiences we've had in the recent past, that we should keep the pressure up and not just drop this thing, because the residents on that street have put up with quite a bit for quite some time. So my, my thinking is that we should go ahead and make it known that we plan on holding a public hearing to declare it a nuisance and just keep him moving forward.
Any other comments from council?
Is that your recommendation, Todd?
My, and Jared's.
I move we adopt it.
Second it. Okay, got a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protan Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you. Item 13 under new business as well. We will now consider the replacement of the monument sign at Wanda Road and Villa Park Road. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item has been on our agenda a couple of times now. This is our second or third revision of the sign. At the last city council meeting, council-directed staff, is that me, or is that, okay, council-directed staff to request a couple more renderings from Bravo, our sign contractor, to include City of, Welcome To, Welcomes You, some type of welcome message, as well as a proposal to include the anti-graffiti sealant, as well as an LED light strip, as opposed to the solar lighting that we previously brought to council. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been working with an electrical contractor to run electricity to the site. It's approximately about 300 feet, which has to be buried 12 to 18 inches underground. To do this, the electrical contractor's cost is 2750 in order, and that's just for the piping. Mike will go out there a day or two before, trench the 300 feet. Mike Knowles, our maintenance supervisor. My conservative estimate is about $1,600 if we rent a trencher on a Friday. We can get it for the weekend for a one-day charge, as opposed to the three-day charge, rent it Friday, return it Monday. And that would be approximately $1,600, given the labor. I'm throwing in a estimate of about $650 contingency, and through that, we will have landscaping, which will, and the marker from, who's it, the Girl Scouts, will need to be dug up and moved. Overall, the new sign that the Community Development Committee met and recommended is Option A of your handout. It does not include a welcome message. It is the same sign as what's on Villa Park Road and Lemon. The cost for that, the anti-graffiti sealant, the LED light strip, and two outlet receptacles is $21,000. With the electrical of 2750 and the trenching of 1,600 plus some contingency, brings our total project cost to $26,000, which we have in our general fund budget to fund the sign. This time, we're looking for a recommendation from the full council to select a design option and seeking authorization to proceed with work.
Jared, just a quick question. I may not have heard you correctly, or I'm just getting tired, and I am getting tired. I had a big day. Did you, you had indicated on the electrical and trenching, we and our guys would be doing that, I believe?
The electrical will be done by an electrical contractor. The trenching would be done by Michael Knowles.
Did you have Bravo quote doing that whole thing, or you just didn't have them quote that part?
We didn't have them quote that.
Okay, fine.
They would sub it out anyways and back on.
Yeah, and you got to assume it's going to be more anyways, so I'm pretty sure we're good on that. Okay, thank you.
We, we called several electrical companies. One company did not do underground outside landscaping work.
Yeah.
One company never submitted a proposal, and the second company was around $4,300, $4,400.
Yeah, so we're good.
And this company selected did some work on our city hall facade, so they're previously approved vendor for us here at city hall.
Great. Any other questions from council members?
If I could, if I can comment, Greg and I went over these designs with multiple staff members, and I know that the last, at the last meeting, the council wanted us to go back and put some sort of wording on there, Welcome To, or This Is Our City. What we concluded at that meeting to bring back to all the councils is that we should have some uniformity in the sign, so that it doesn't look like we have a hodgepodge of signs all over the city. And not that welcome wouldn't be nice, but why didn't we put Welcome at the other sign? And I just, we just determined that it was simple, it was clean, it looked good, we, the lighting was good.
Yeah.
And.
I, I have to agree. I think Option A certainly is the cleanest-looking, and it is, matches what we have. The other ones just look a bit busy, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, and we, you know, we discussed it a little bit, and we just thought, well, we're going to have four of these eventually around town. Let's have some uniformity to it.
Yeah, I agree.
Was there one done with City of on it, or no?
I believe I did see a rendering that did say City. It's not included in here. We did have, we did have one originally done, but we said no because, well, we don't recommend it, just because we would like them all to look the same.
Yeah, if you did.
And they look good.
Not that much room on them to put a bunch of verbiage. When you start adding stuff, if any, that one, but these look really poopy.
Yeah, it's busy. It's simple, I think it's classy looking. It worked for the first sign, and it looks nice.
Yeah, I agree. Any other comments?
Well, I liked it the first time. It's just that Mr. Almer was so fired up. So, okay. My only question is, are we going to have the stack stone down here, even though that it's going to be masked completely, once the Girl Scouts landscaping is put in front? Are we spending that money on that?
Yes.
And what?
The hedges do, the hedges, the bushes, whatever you want. The landscaping will grow above it, but it will often be trimmed and scaled back. So depending which angle you catch it from, it'd just be a nice design feature.
It's on a slight rise, too, anyway, correct?
Yes.
Because that's the whole area is sloped.
So it's, it's one and a half foot tall, but it's, but there is no flower box in between here, it's just stone against the wall. I think this is fine.
Yeah.
I like, I like it, I like clean more, anyway.
And in the, the rendering as well, on Option A, it shows the sign closer to the front of that landscaping portion, it will be located more towards, yeah, the rear of it in front of the silver sheets.
That looks good. Greg?
And there's no way skateboarders can do any damage to this?
Not unless they can ollie or jump about 20 feet away over the grass.
That's a good question, though. Yeah, okay. And this, this sign is exactly the same as the one on Lemon and Villa Park Road?
Okay, okay. Let's go to the public. Do we have anyone from the public like to speak to this item? James, would you like to speak to this item? Come on!
Come on!
Come on!
You're here!
Why move in tonight? Come on! Have a good evening, James. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the council. Any final comments? Or do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I second. Great. Jared?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you very much.
Boy, it's nice to get back to a normal ballot.
Ah, didn't that feel good? It really did. Okay, item 14 is an item that I believe we tabled last council meeting. This is on Public Employees Pension Reform Act. Councilwoman Polly had added this to the agenda. I don't suppose you'd want to table this one more time, would you?
Well, I hope everyone has been, I hope everyone has been reading it, because it's good reading.
Yeah, it is good reading.
I really did appreciate very much the work that Mr. Litvin did for us. The briefing was outstanding. And I, and I just want to know, in the future, you know, what actions does the city of Villa Park need to take to be sure that we're ready? You know, we're not hiring anybody right now, but the time to have this all in place is now, not right, you're right up against the wall, preparing to hire someone. And then I also wanted to know if the city attorney happened to have any idea about the rumors of pulling this or rescinding this? Have you heard any other rumblings about that? That's just my question about that.
Well, it's well-known that it was a ruse in order to get the state income tax raised.
I see.
So it was part of the political, look at us, we're controlling costs, so give us more money, because we're such wise stewards. There have been, that was a serious statement, don't laugh at me. There have been rumblings from big labor that, you know, this is oppressive, now we can roll that back. I'm not aware of the legislation advancing, though, but that's a good, I can check on that tomorrow with my legislation service, so.
Well, I just want to be sure that everybody's looking at this, and then I think that really, it probably needs to go to our Human Resources Committee to ensure that they've got the ball rolling and have things in place, so that they can bring something back to council. And, and I'm willing to not dig too deep into this right now, but I would like, for the benefit of the community, for our city attorney to give a better briefing on this, perhaps once it's out of Human Resources. So is there any way to assign this to Human Resources? Can that be an action of the council?
You know, I know Ryan has put together a PowerPoint out of, how many, how long is it? Well, okay, maybe we can do this at a later time, then, after he would, just looking up on the board, we did put together a little.
You did all this work?
Well, Ryan did it.
I can cut out the PERS basics and just give you the pepper part if you want.
See, the thing is, is it's important for us to understand this. It's really important for us to understand this. You guys are dying.
No, no, I, I agree, but it's just late, it's late.
All right, this is the proviso. This item needs to be at the front of April's agenda. Because we keep, you know, I, I'm with you. Because it's really late, and I'm not feeling all that great.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise.
Can we move this to the front of the April agenda? I want to get this briefing. I really, I want, I want us to understand.
We wanted to go to Human Resources first before the next council meeting.
If there's, if it's possible, if it's not possible for them to meet, that's fine, but I, I think that if Jared could put this toward the front.
At least get the briefing at the front of the next meeting.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's a good deal.
It can also go before the HR committee as well. April 3, at 7:30 a.m., we have a Budget and Finance Committee, and Mayor Reese and Mayor Protan Barnett serve on the Budget and Finance Committee as well as the HR Committee.
There you go.
So we could just include it.
Fine.
Figure out what you need to do to make sure we've got our ducks in a row.
Winner. So this will be moved to next meeting. Is there any other action Jared needed on this item?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay.
You know, I just, I just got to ask this question of council. Paragraph 1D in your office memo, second sentence, non-safety employees can retire, can early retire, one sentence. What does that mean? It's paragraph 1D, page 4 of the, of the memo. It's a second sentence. There's three sentences in there. It's.
1B.
To Jared Hildebrand memorandum.
Right, no, I have it. You're on page 4, paragraph D.
Paragraph D, second, second, oh, I guess it's the third sentence, I'm sorry, third sentence, non-safety employees. What is that saying?
Oh, yeah.
Non-safety employee?
No, I know what a non-safety employee, it says can retire at age of 52 with five years of service, but they receive incremental increases in the percentage factor used to calculate the pension commencing at 1% until it reaches 2.5% at age 67. What does that mean? Do you have any idea?
Well, you have to get, basically, you need five years to be vested in PERS.
Okay.
You can retire early at 52, but it's at a much lower percentage of overall return. So usually, you get the 2.5% upon retirement, at normal age retirement. You could do it at 52, but it's at, you get 1% of your PERS. It's basically when you opt into Social Security early, you get a lower percentage. That's what that means.
So this starts at 1%?
They receive incremental increases in the percentage factor used to calculate the pension commencing at 1%.
So if you stay longer past 52, each year it goes up, it's like one of those tax tables, a certain percentage.
Oh, so if you bail early, instead of getting 2%, to the age of retirement, it drops back to 1%. So you get half.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And that's a new employee requirement.
Yeah, and what is a new employee to us and a new employee to them are two different things. So.
Right, well, and we'll get into this later, but yeah, so.
Right.
If somebody transfers from another city, they're already in the system, they're Uh, if somebody transfers from another city, they're already in the system, they're not included, they're not deemed a new employee. They're a employee vested in PERS, that would be under the old system.
But if there was going to be a city where they'd be a brand-new, brand-new employee, this would probably be one of them because we tend to be a starter city.
You know, and one of the problems is this actually hurts cities because it's sort of in there, you know, usually before, you know, I'd advised you, well, for new employees, you can set a completely new rate of, uh, retirement and percentage. This preempts all that. So you're tied into the percentages of the state and that benefits you if it's a new, new employee, i.e. somebody who's never worked for a city before, but if it's somebody who has worked for a city or hasn't been absent for more than six months, they're tied into the old system and you can't give them less than that separately independently as a city.
Even if they already had less than that before?
Even if, do you remember?
What it is, is they would be, uh, considered a new member versus a classic member. Um, so if it's somebody coming from another city, if they had whatever they had before, it's regardless of that, they come to Villa Park, they'd be required to be offered whatever was offered to current employees as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve.
Obviously, we need to do this at the, when we're fresh.
Oh, oh, definitely.
So, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will fully admit that, um, I understand this stuff sorta. Uh, a lot of this is incredibly ambiguous and vague and we've designated one of our personnel guys at Ratan to do this for all the cities. So I, I thank you for the compliments on the memo. I had very little to do with it. We had our, our PERS guy write it because I, I get involved in this, I'm like, I don't know what that means. So, um, maybe we'll even have Bill come to the meeting because, um, he'd be the best to explain it.
That would, that would be a great idea, especially if we're going to have it early enough that we won't be, you know, pinching upon his time too much.
Yeah.
I, I'm glad to go ahead and continue this item till next month, the beginning of the meeting, and I hope HR has a chance to look at it.
Awesome.
One, one quick comment. Uh, ask, Todd, I'm going to ask you and Ryan this. This, this is all required by law. There's nothing we can really do about this. Is that correct?
Correct.
And there is no future that we couldn't pay people more money every year and opt out of the pension thing entirely?
You can, we investigated this.
Does ring bells?
Yeah. You can opt out of PERS as a city, but basically you gotta pay up your, uh, uh, the amount of the accrued, uh, um, benefits that PERS is on the hook to pay for you. So that they would do an actuarial analysis, they being PERS, of how much they would have to pay, and then the city would have to pay that.
So it'd be present value of money, right?
Right, and it would be.
We don't have the money to do that.
It would be a lot of money and we've tried, we tried, um, last, maybe two years ago, I forget, whenever Rick brought it up.
Tried to get the numbers and they won't give you the number until you opt, until you declare that you're going to opt out.
They will not give you the number until you commit to opting out because they don't want to go through the work and everybody would ask for that number. And, uh, even then, it takes like three years to opt out. It's an extended process. So you're pretty much trapped, uh, in all reality.
By design and.
Well, sure, sure.
And, but the, the reason I'm asking is because that, uh, Deanna and I went to a, a meeting for League of Cities and I asked a question in front of everyone, uh, to these fellows that were saying, oh, we're going to have six and a half and seven, seven and a half percent returns. And I said, well, that hasn't been there in ten years. You're, you guys are bumping along at one at half and one. How can we possibly expect to pay all these pensions? And they finally said, we don't know.
All right, well.
And these are the experts, so it's like. Finally, a true answer.
Yeah.
You know. And I would defer to Michelle, but I mean, it's, well. Anybody has any connection to, to municipal finance or municipal law, because they're pretty much becoming the same thing now. I mean, it's a joke and everybody knows that, but nobody, I don't know.
It's a statutorily mandated joke.
Uh, on the public employee side, absolutely. Absolutely.
And if you read some of these changes and really look at these, even these are a joke. There's so many holes in this thing to pop it back to.
Oh, yeah, well, this, this was labor written. Don't be, you know, disabused, but, um, but, um, you know, it's only a question of when it all falls apart. It's only a question of when.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're moving on to the next item.
It is the league.
Um. I don't think we have to, well, we just, we all agreed we're gonna.
To continue the item.
Yeah, next, it's done, over. All right, item fifteen is an item regarding, uh, the Sacramento League of California Cities that we have been a member of for years. And now we're going to take a look at the Association of California Cities, Orange County. So Deborah, I'm going to just make this kind of easy for you so we don't have to listen to a huge thing on this one. Um, I've been working with Kelly for about eight months. I've gone to a few of their meetings. Uh, we've been waiting for the day that our dues were finally coming up due for the Sacramento League that we all, I, I shouldn't say we all, I want to bail out of and go to the Orange County one as you do. Um, and I'm sure our colleagues are going to agree with that.
Good.
Um, the Orange County League has offered a very, very fair price, less expensive, about twenty-nine hundred instead of forty-three hundred and fifty dollars. They are doing a wonderful job in our local community. They more tie to our issues down here, not up north. Um, and I even asked Kelly, or I should say Lacey Kelly, I always, her names are two first names, Lacey Kelly. Sometimes I call her Kelly and her name is Lacey Kelly. Anyways. Um, she had indicated that next year probably would be about twenty-nine hundred as well and that she would have to get an okay from her Board of Directors, but she's pretty sure she can get that. Our city is unique. It's not like some of the other cities. So the good news is this is not a, just a buy-in cheap deal for us. Uh, it looks like next year may be similar. Uh, so I think that's really great and I probably stole enough of your thunder, but I just wanted to help you with that. Um, and that's it.
I don't think so because I've been talking about leaving the League of Cities now, I think, two or three times a year for the past six years.
Money's over.
For the past six years, I've been trying to get us to leave, but Lacey has done a great job. I spoke with her today and she's pretty sure she could get that, uh, hammered.
Yep.
In stone. I think, uh, when we're looking at cities that are not in the league, there are more of them leaving all the time. I know Yorba Linda is not in the league anymore, um, and they've joined this, this organization. All of the same services, they've been growing and expanding and at a much lower cost than what we've been paying. So I'm glad, I'm glad that it's finally time. Yes, I'd like to move that we.
Second.
Leave the League of Cities.
Oh, you beat me. You beat me, Rick.
Oh, we've got somebody who wants to speak.
Oh.
But I still would like to make the motion.
Yeah. All right, yes, come on up, please. You bet.
I think there was anybody left out there.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. No, I appreciate it. I've been waiting here for a while to at least, uh.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, 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 that's fine. No, absolutely. Um, just wanted to make a, a presentation here of what the league truly offers, um, what we really offer. We started back in nineteen, uh, eighteen ninety-eight. We're a nonpartisan, uh, nonprofit organization. And our forefathers in local government knew, in order for us to have a cohesive, unified voice and have a relevant voice in the Capitol, we needed to unite and that's what happened through the League of Cities over a hundred and fifteen years ago. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization, um, and our mission remains the same. It's to protect and control, protect local control. Uh, that's what we're all about. Now, in your packets, you, you have, uh, documents that highlight the specifics, the overall benefits that the league provides to all cities. But I wanted to have this opportunity to specifically say what the league provides specifically to Villa Park and, uh, uniquely to Villa Park. One of the documents, the most telling document that you have in your packet is a gen, is a matrix that I asked staff to generate. And what that is, uh, it's a return on investment matrix going back to two thousand and five to two thousand and thirteen, uh, to present year, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, that highlights dollar for dollar, all the categories and all the local revenues that the League of Cities directly protected either through lobbying efforts or through passing a ballot measure. Now, if you take all those categories, property tax, Proposition forty-two highway tax monies, highway user tax account money. If you take the aggregate of all those dollars that we've helped protect specifically for Villa Park, we've helped protect one million, eight hundred, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Those are hard dollars. That's not rhetoric, that's dollar for dollar. Now, if you take the aggregate of what the city pays, three thousand, nine hundred dollars, you take the aggregate going back to two thousand and five to present year and you compare that to that one point eight million, the city enjoys a re, a return on investment ratio of forty-eight to one. Now, if so, if the, uh, the financial question is asked, do our membership dollars benefit the taxpayers of Villa Park? The answer is yes, by fifty-eight to one. Now, in terms of the resources that the league offers city staff, unlike nor other organization, um, we have eleven staff departments, eleven professional departments, city attorneys department, city clerks department, public works department, city clerk, uh, sorry, I didn't mention city clerks, fire chiefs, police chiefs. All these professional departments, your city has access to. Now, to be frank, the city of Villa Park, the size of Villa Park gets a tremendous bang for its buck in terms of the access that you guys have to those departments. You have the same access that Santa Ana does, that, uh, a, you know, Newport Beach does. All these large cities, you have that same access. If there are certain grants that are available under the public works, um, category, you have the public works department to update the city on that. If there's a change in election law, you have the city clerks department to update the city on that. Now, imagine what, um, uh, the cost to, to be a member of individual associations for this profession. Imagine what that cost would be, um, to sign up for all these various organizations. Well, you don't need to do that as a member of the League of Cities. We're a one-stop professional shop. You won't have to pay, uh, a consultant to give you these answers. You can find it right here, uh, from the practitioners that are directly in the field. Um, clearly, the more the city is involved, the more it gets out of it. So the one thing I, uh, would recommend is to continue your involvement. The city has had an involvement in the league for a while. The city's been a member since incorporation, since eighty-seven. Um, in terms of the elected official side of things, um, we also offer several opportunities for elected officials to get involved. We have eight policy committee, uh, uh, policy committees that you can have direct access on. The city of Villa Park has had seats on those policy committees. Uh, we have statewide, uh, profession, uh, statewide events, some in the north, some in the south. The most recent was, uh, the New Mayors and Councilmembers Academy, um, in Sacramento. And Councilmember Mills and Councilwoman Fasenelli, I, I had the opportunity to meet you both at that, at that event and I thank you for participating in that. Now, can you always travel up north? No, uh, the, the State League Board and the Orange County Division Board of Directors, which is a local regional body that governs the Orange County Division, they have ta, they've made it a priority to minimize the cost of going to meetings. And so what we have offered was we've offered webinars, we, where staff, where electeds can participate. Um, we have local meetings, the Orange, now, I just want to make clear that the league, uh, is not just based in Sacramento. We have an Orange County Division. If you cannot attend these statewide meetings up in Sacramento or wherever they may be, come to an Orange County Division quarterly meeting. Those are the meetings that I've had in the past. We've had the State Controller speak. We've had the State Legislative Analyst speak, Mac Taylor. I'm focusing on bringing state access here locally. You guys don't have to go up there. The next, and now, in, in the next meeting is, uh, April the eighteenth in the city of Brea. Um, and I haven't announced it yet, but I will announce it here, that we're going to have the Chair of the Board of Equalization, Betty Yee, uh, be the key, be the keynote speaker. Now, if, you know what I know, Orange County gets a far less share in property tax than all the other counties. If you want to deliver that message, I'm giving you the access to deliver that message directly. You don't have to go to Sacramento, you can come locally. Best of all, the meeting is free. It's free to members to attend. Um, so again, I ask the council members to, to get involved. If, 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 if you don't get us an opportunity and you don't get involved, you won't see that, that opportunity, what we offer. Uh, Villa Park has had the tradition of getting involved in the league. Uh, former Mayor, uh, Bill, um, Macaloni, he personally contributed to our Proposition twenty-two campaign, uh, with, uh, through personal finances. Um, former Mayor, uh, Rich Ulmer, um, was a Board of Directors. So the, the city of Villa Park has had a tradition of, of, uh, getting involved in the league. Uh, in terms of current, uh, you know, current advocacy and I'll just close by saying that the league is suing the state of California to prevent them from taking, uh, you know, property tax dollars, uh, through a bill they passed, AB fourteen eighty-four, the League of California Cities versus Montez Santos. There's no other state organization or, or organization period that's doing that on behalf of local government. Uh, the league is. This, this lawsuit can set a dangerous precedent and we're trying to stop that. Uh, in terms of legislation, we have five lobbyists that are your boots on the ground in the Capitol that are monitoring legislation. Uh, we also have federal assets and just in closing, the league drafted and helped pass through a broad coalition, Prop one A in two thousand and four that protects your sales tax and property tax and Proposition twenty-two, most recently in two thousand and ten, both of which were, uh, su, uh, supported by Villa Park with Proposition twenty-two most recently enjoying a unanimous vote of the City Council in support. So, uh, in closing, um, before, um, you make a decision, I at least wanted to, on record, just to provide the true services that the League of Cities offers. For thirty-nine hundred dollars, um, for thirty-nine hundred a year, the city gets a tremendous bang for its buck. It really does. So, in closing, I would just wanted to offer that and be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, there has been, uh, you know, a, a while back, does the league still exist in Cal, in Orange County? And the answer is absolutely yes. We're not Sacramento-based. Uh, and it's important to be a part of the process so your voices can be heard. And with that, I'll just close and if there's any questions.
I do have a question. Is that SB seven, is that the bill that they, that they're trying to put through to make sure that any state, uh, project funds have to be, uh, bid on a prevailing wage basis and, and bring in the charter cities as well? Are you guys doing anything on that?
That's, that's, we're absolutely doing something. We, we are, believe we have a, an opposed and less amended position on that bill. That's a bill we're closely tracking and you're absolutely right. The legislature is trying to pass SB seven to mandate charter cities if they use any, in any state dollars to force them to take prevailing wage. Now, that sets a dramatic precedent on charter cities as a whole. If it's not prevailing wage one, uh, year, what's it going to be next year? And we're absolutely in opposition to that and we have that on, 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 on the high priority screen. But the point is, is the league needs a unified, um, membership. We have ninety-five, uh, ninety, I'm sorry, ninety-seven percent of the, of the cities in California are members. There are no additional cities that are leaving the League of Cities. Not one has left. We have eight cities that are not members, uh, and there are some cities that are work, that I am working on. Uh, most recently, Santa Ana joined, uh, this year. So again, for, for a, a city the size of Villa Park, the infrastructure that it offers for staff, for the opportunity that it offers for electeds and for the thirty-nine hundred that you guys pay for a year, I think you get a tremendous bang for your buck, especially if you look at the dollar for dollar comparison, the fifty-eight one to one return on investment.
Great, thank you very much. Are there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this?
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, Kenneth Piggy from the Association of California Cities. Um, wanted to talk about the benefits of the association. Um, you have an email in your agenda packet, kind of outlining from, uh, Lacey Kelly about all the new, uh, cost saving benefits we have at the association this year. I wanted to highlight a few of them. Um, first off, we have a capital track program, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. But what we can offer with that is customized legislative tracking for all, any of our member cities and some of our other, uh, partner organizations. Um, many of our cities are using this. Um, the city of Anaheim has valued this at five thousand dollars. Um, and savings to them, which, um, more than covers the cost of Villa Parks due to, with the association. Um, our e-Hub program, which I hope you are all members of, and forgive me, I don't know if you all are, but e-Hub is an online deposit, repository for ordinances, uh, documents, research, uh, any kind of issue you could think of. There are documents on there from all thirty-four cities in Orange County that help staff and you, uh, as electeds, understand issues better. Uh, we did some research for the city of Placentia last year on, uh, uh, compensation for, uh, uh, police officers, saved the city over thirteen thousand dollars for not having to go out to bid on that. That's just one example of e-Hub's usage. Um, it's available. It's just, it's very interactive. You can request documents through us. We can do the research for you. We hired an additional staff member to be the staff for that. So we have, uh, uh, basically you have an additional staff member than what we already have here at the city that we can do research for you and provide you with that information. Um, we have, uh, efficiency audits. We, we started a affinity program with the association where, um, member cities can, um, member cities can have discounted rates on services. We have a partnership with Procure America who will do an audit of all your systems in the city. If any cost benefits, you get to keep that, but the initial audit is free. Um, we have a PIO, a, a, kind of a virtual PIO program is what we're calling it, where, um, there are only two or three actual, uh, specific PIOs in the county anymore. We've started this with the city of Stanton where, um, our communications team will come in and do a, one free kind of press release on an issue that you were looking at or, and kind of feed it throughout the county. And then from there on, it would be a twenty-five percent discount, I believe is what we've said, um, on any services moving forward. So you can communicate on the issues that are important to the city. Um, we have just, just launched in the last month, a free cybersecurity audit for the city. Um, this is something that is very, very, uh, big on city mind right now. We had a program on this in January. Um, our, one of our partner organizations will come in and do a free audit of your city's, uh, basically, um, cybersecurity level. And, um, there would be a cost associated with after the initial assessment, but the initial assessment would be free. There's no, you know, ties to, you have to go forward with anything, but the initial assessment would be free. Um, our biggest, uh, probably our biggest advantage is that we, we have no travel and no cost. You know, we don't make profit at events. We charge for meals and AV costs, basically. Um, we don't charge for staff time. We don't charge for, uh, speakers. You pay for what you're getting there. That's it. Um, you get four free events per year. We have receptions and, and our, um, our, next month, we have our Board of Directors installation in Newport Beach. Um, four free events per year and our, one of our other biggest advantages is that we have policy, policy work that's focused on member feedback. We survey our members every year, figure out what they wanted, what they want us to focus on and we focus our policy committees around the, around those issues. We don't have standing policy committees. Our only standing committee is a ledge committee that meets every month. But every other committee is developed on member feedback and works on issues that are important to Orange County cities. Um, you had a nice brief discussion on pension reform. I invite you all to participate in our pension reform committee, which has been talking about Pepper for almost a year, has been talking about pension reform for, since before we were in sep, um, before we started in two thousand and eleven. We'd love to have Villa Park part of the fold. Um, your, your colleagues in other cities would love to have you back in the fold. We have twenty-five members of the thirty-four cities in Orange County, um, and, uh, would happen to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, any questions?
Are these twenty-five members also members of the League of Cities or did they, did they leave in general?
Yeah, I, I would leave that to Tony to answer the number of cities for the league, but, um, there are some who are dual members. There are some who are members of the other and there's some who are members of.
If I may, I can actually answer that question because I asked the same question of Lacey today because I wanted to know what the ones that have left the league, Anaheim, Garden Grove, La Palma, Laguna de Gal, Los Alamos, Mission Viejo, the city of Orange, uh, Rancho Santa Margarita, Stanton, Tustin, Yorba Linda, uh, and then they just added two new cities. Garden, uh, Garden Grove and Laguna de Gal are new adds, but we're seeing a trend. The first, the first year, my, my gut told me we should do it at first, but you were so infant, you were an infant and they didn't, you were.
Yeah, it was new.
Well, yes, you actually are still an infant.
No offense.
But you are still, you know, but they, they didn't have the, they weren't developed enough. They didn't have the services. They didn't have the training, uh, and so, you know, but, but that's why I attended your new elected officials training to see where you'd gotten and it, it was very impressive. I learned way more at that two days and it only cost me forty bucks. I learned way more at that two days and it only cost me forty bucks versus what it cost me to fly up to Sacramento. And I have sat on the League of Cities', uh, policy, uh, uh, committees and sat around the, uh, around a huge board table with, with, uh, elected officials from all over the state, hammered something out that was, you know, I will have to say, a little bit maybe more conservative in thought or at least fiscally conservative, sent that, that item forward to have the statewide League of Cities' executive board nix it and throw it away after we all sat around and beat it up. So, you know, what's the point of being involved in an organization that really does not respect the opinions of those that are more conservative in nature? And there haven't been a lot of victories lately. Um, and so I, I just think it's time. These are the folks that we will probably have more in common with, uh, and there's power in this growing number. And I've been very impressed, I've been really impressed with the staff Lacy's brought on um, and the, um, private sector partners, quite frankly, that they've been able to attract. And we get an awful lot out of that as well. So, it's, it's a slam dunk for me and I appreciate you taking the time to come out. But I've had experience with league, I've been watching them. Um, I think it's, I think it's the only wise, plus it's a thousand dollars less, come on. Okay.
Uh, any other questions?
Does, um, does the, uh, your organization, uh, send us email legislative updates as well?
Yes, we do.
How often do those go out?
Um, as issues come up, um, we also do updates after our legislative committee meets. So, um, if we take a position, we'll send out an email saying, you know, ACCC takes a position. But, um, if there's an issue pressing, like a committee hearings the next day, we'll send out an email.
And how about litigation on some of these issues? Or i- i- is your organization pursuing litigation on some of these issues? Is that more being left to the League of Cities?
We have never been a party for litigation. We've, we've supported litigation in the past, but we've never been a party.
Okay, that's all I got.
Well, the other thing that they have is this customized legislative tracking. So if there are specific issues we want, they'll track them for us, I mean, that's, that's pretty good.
I mean, frankly, in looking through this stuff, the, the, some of this litigation, and I don't know who else is going to undertake some of this stuff. Um, I, I was even thinking that maybe it would make sense to, if we make the transition, to continue to pay, if we can, the litigation surcharge with the League of Cities to support some of that litigation because that is crucial stuff on some of these, on some of these matters is to get up there and litigate some of these things. For example, SB seven, I wouldn't be surprised that thing ends up in litigation because I think it's going to, it may confront the constitutional rights of a charter city. And this may not be as big an organization to do that. And I hate to pull the support from what's probably the one organization does do it. So if we switch, I think we had to give some consideration to continuing to fund their legal surcharges.
Just to answer your question, council member, um, the majority of cities in Orange County are members of both. Uh, we have, we have some that are mem- only specific to the association, some that are only members specific to the league, but the vast majority of Orange County cities are members of both. Um, in or, in, in terms of the, uh, ten percent optional surcharge, um, you can pay the state league membership due and not pay that surcharge, but I don't believe you can do, you can't do the reverse, not pay the state league dues and, and just pay the ten percent.
But between you and me, what's the chances if we wrote a check and sent it over for that surcharge, even though we're not a member, that you'd all send it back to us?
We, we would send that back to you.
Really?
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it would be what, uh, three hundred, nine hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, they wouldn't take that, you, you can't take that as a donation toward that, uh, toward that fund.
I know, uh, the board would, would much rather have, uh, Villa Park remain a, a full member.
I understand that.
Sure, of course, yeah. Thank you. All right, any last comments from council? Other than that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved that we, didn't we already have a motion?
I think we started that. Oh, by, by Rick, yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right. Roll call, please.
The motion was to sever our relationship with the League of Cities and join the Orange County, uh, division. I'm really tired.
Oh, we're all beat, unbeat, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion, second, Jared.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Paulie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett.
Yes.
Councilman Fessinelli.
Epstein.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Mayor Reese.
Yes. Thank you so much. All right, we are skipping item sixteen because we did that at the beginning. We are now on item seventeen. It is time to hear from individual council member informational items, starting with, how about Deanna?
Okay.
Please.
Quickly.
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's a good word.
We started, let's see, we had, went to the school, we had a school committee meeting here that was well attended to. We had, um, some board of supervisors here, we had Kathy Moffett here, we had, um, a gentleman here who described what a lockdown is as far as the schools are concerned and gave us a good definition of safety when it came to our children. And that meeting went very well. Uh, we had, uh, the Toronto Water Board, went to that, nothing has changed since the previous month. Um, as far as the community development, Greg and I met for a couple hours. We hashed out the signs that were approved today and had a nice meeting with Chase Bank. Um, afterwards, they came, they introduced themselves, himself to Greg and I, just introduced himself and told us what the plans were and what the background was. And it gave us a little bit of insight as to who they were and where they came from. And we certainly appreciated, um, Chase Bank doing that with us. As far as anything else, because I just want to bring to the attention to the council, I did it to Jared about, um, a law that was passed, or actually it was a lawsuit that was passed that I brought up regarding public records law extending to private devices, where in San Jose, it was ruled that your phone, your texts on your phone, since you're a council person, is no, is not private. So you need to just be cautious about that. And I'm bringing it to the attention of the council because this was kind of been my hot button since I got on here, considering that, you know, we all have private phones and we have private conversations. We now have an email address that is solely designed just for the city of Villa Park. So when we respond now, it comes from the city. And I intend on using that. I would caution everyone to make sure that when you're getting texts, that possibly you should just go through your email because that way it is public, that way the public has access to it and it's transparent because you don't want to have information on your private phone in case something does happen because it's not going to be private. So, I'll take a copy of this, you guys can read it, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, but it is just information though pertaining to public business.
Correct.
So, if, you know, your husband sends you a text, you know, not to, well, that would still be.
I get it.
Pick up some milk at Ralph's?
Yeah, I get it, exactly, exactly. But it's just something to be cautious of because somebody still does need to sift through it if they do want something. And we have to hire attorneys to sift through it and only give out the information that's.
Well, that, that used to be the old trick.
That's how it works.
We'd tell people to use their private phones because then it would be, it wouldn't be subject to a public record. That's what I used to tell people, now I can't tell them that anymore.
Conduct the public's business in, in public.
Yes.
The public gave up on us. We're in.
They're watching.
Maybe.
Or tomorrow, or tomorrow.
We're just like Johnny Carson, you know, watching us through their. Oh, jeez. Speaking of bad, Rick, next.
My turn, okay. I, I've attended, uh, I don't know, two or more, I guess, OCFA board meetings since I was here last. They substantially increased the fees for fire services, inspections, et cetera. I don't remember I, whether I brought this up last time or not, but the, the rate on it's a couple hundred dollars an hour. So that was increased significantly. Um, really the big issue down there, they're getting close to union negotiations for a new union contract. And I think the hot button is the, it's the pensions for the OCFA are severely, severely underfunded. Um, I don't know that anyone really knows how far underfunded they are from what I've seen. Just my, my gut feeling is it's a billion dollars or more, but, you know, that's just kind of reading between the lines. So, that is a huge issue. There is a, there is a rather significant issue with the city of Irvine because the city of Irvine is a structural fire fund city, which means they are committing their property tax resources for fire activity in its entirety to the Orange County Fire Authority. And I don't know whether my knowledge is, I don't think it's privileged or confidential, but just I'll give them deference. And I'll merely say that there is a huge spread in what they're receiving and the services that they're getting. And there's going to be some negotiations there, I don't know where that's going. I meant the.
Called donor city.
Yeah, donor city when they're, when they're, yeah, when they're, when they're, when their inflow is greater than the, than the charged out benefit they're getting.
They actually are too.
Yeah, I know we are. We've got the same problems, but our numbers are.
Little smaller amounts.
Multiple, we're exponentially less than the, than the, than the loss they're getting with our entire fund, yeah. It's, it's a huge disparity. Uh, we got an opportunity to meet the union leadership on a little, uh, on a little orientation we had. They said that's never happened before. They led the board through the, through various rooms with management and we went from room to room hopping around management segments. This year, they put the union leadership in a conference room and fed us to them. Um, which was very interesting, um, you know, uh, very polite group, uh, recognized that we have a huge problem with the pension funding. Thought they had some resolution that would could be immediate, that I don't think will be, but. So that'll be interesting coming up. So that's really it on that item. I just want to throw, since this is a council member information and/or required meeting attendance reports, I just want to throw one item out with regard to this, these nuisance matters that we keep dealing with. And Jared and I talked about this a little bit. I would like to see us revisit the nuisance policy and puts, maybe put some teeth in this thing and perhaps shorten some of these timeframes. I, I think there are some of these where we really need to get on them. I mean, I've been here for a short period and already, you know, one popped up that had been, that's been brewing for two years and then we took care of fairly quickly. Now we've got another one I thought was just somebody puts something on the front yard because I got the email from Ed Halligan on it. And, uh, you know, now it turns out after this that this is an issue that's been dragging on perhaps for a couple of years. And I just don't think it's right and, and, you know, we've got some weakness, even now, it looks like ninety days minimum, just to get things rolling. I'd really like to revisit the nuisance policy. Jared actually made that suggestion and, uh, I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a tiered nuisance plan depending upon how serious it is, if it's a rodent, safety, health issue. And I think we should have a, some tiered options and, and some teeth in this. And I think council ought to get involved at some earlier stages. So frankly, staff isn't stuck dealing with this, trying to work with the homeowner and deciding where to go. Let's just get it to council sooner, we'll look at it and we'll give you some direction and move on. You know, we're in touch with the community.
That's a good idea.
So I, I'd like to see something presented with some suggested, new, new nuisance ordinance, uh, that stagger, you know, staged based upon occurrence and gives us some, some teeth and some, and some quick timing where it's necessary.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to report on one item. The last meeting at the sanitation district on twelve, I'm sorry, two twenty-seven, this shows how tired I am. Um, we're, we really focused on, and for many months we've been discussing, the rate increases coming up at Orange County sanitation. They have proposed five-year rate increase, year one at four and a half percent, year two through five at two and a half percent. If you look at about twelve different, um, counties, if you will, that do sanitation, the rates we pay is in the bottom one-third tier, it's not bad. Orange County sanitation, for about a year, spent a million dollars a day. Can you imagine that, a million a day? That is real on their infrastructure. They have rebuilt that place because it was very aged. And, um, the money they are asking for is extremely fair. It is a well-run organization. I wish other organizations were ran as well as Orange County sanitation. I'm very impressed with their management. Uh, they have cut so many expenses down there, I'm very proud of them. So I, that's what we've been discussing is that, and tomorrow night is actually the vote on that item. I'm done, Deborah.
Um, it's, it, it's not just the public hearing, but it's also the vote on the item?
That's what I just said, we vote tomorrow night.
Okay, well, so I'm assuming you're going to agree to a rate increase for everyone?
I'm, I'm going to agree for me, yes, on that.
Well, no, you're agreeing for all of us.
Well, obviously, I'm the representative, of course.
I know, and, and I'm wondering, you know, I mean.
Why don't you come down and speak, Deborah?
I, I will, I will. But the thing is, Brad, you, uh, this is what, this is what's happening. We, they had a rate increase in two thousand and five.
I'm well aware of that.
They had another rate increase in two thousand and eight, sixty-five percent, right? And now they're going to have another one. And, and we're wondering, the community is wondering, you know, when does it end? That's, that's the problem. There's a, there's debt, you've got six hundred million dollars.
Why don't you come down and speak tomorrow night to the board of directors, Deborah?
Well, I, I think that you're representing us.
Yes, I am. And I've analyzed it very carefully over many, many, many months.
Well, how is it that LA County Sanitation District is charging half as much as what Orange County will be? I mean, how, how can that be? How can that be?
I don't know if that's true or not.
It is true, it will be true.
Well, we're still in the bottom third tier of all the other cities.
Comparing what everyone else does. Comparing what everyone else does doesn't matter, this is what I understand. I understand there's like one point three billion dollars worth of capital improvement projects that cities want to tap into from the Orange County Sanitation District. And the members of that board, that twenty-five member board, are not willing to give up anything. Well, we're not getting anything from that, we are charging our residents a sewer usage fee and we're taking care of our own infrastructure issues, true? True.
Um, the vote requires a, a very high majority tomorrow night.
What is it, two-thirds?
And it's, I, it, it's that or more, it's very high. Um, I want to say eighteen out of twenty-five people, if I'm not mistaken, so it's very high. Um, there are some alternative options, but it's either pay now or pay later. One of the options that's fairly popular is instead of it being a four and a half percent on year one and two and a half percent on the following four years, people are saying, well, how about just do two and a half on all five years? Forget the four and a half on year one, do two and a half on all five years. They've done many studies on that, it's pay now or pay later, either borrow the money or you pay for it now. So it makes a big difference, I've looked at that very much so. There's a very good chance that will pass instead of the four and a half and then two and a half. But, you know, whether it's two and a half for five years or four and a half and two and a half for four years, one of the two is going to pass. I'd love for you to come tomorrow night and speak to us.
Well, I've been paying a lot of attention to this and I think the rate payers are very, well, I know you pay more attention because you're there all the time, but you're representing us and the fact that you're going to vote yes to increase our rates when we've had rate increase after rate increase.
When you spend the kind of money they have spent to have a good, uh, service for all of us, it doesn't come free.
I understand it's an important service.
These people don't waste money on labor like other organizations, I can tell you. These people are very frugal people. They do a great job. Come on down, I welcome you tomorrow night.
Well, I just think it's, I, yeah, I know you don't want to hear it because you're just going to go to bed.
I've heard it, what more can you add?
The thing is, is you're representing us and you're going to go forward and you're going to vote yes on yet another rate increase.
I believe in everything, yes, that's correct.
You want to get really frustrated, Deborah? Come to an OCFA meeting with me.
No, I don't want to do that. Well, I will talk about just a couple of things that I attended. I've never attended a Waco meeting before. It's the Water Advisory, uh, Committee of Orange County. And I highly encourage you to attend one of them, it's a very early morning meeting. Uh, I only went because of the speaker. But I also got an outstanding briefing, a legislative update briefing on a lot of different issues that are water-related. Uh, they talked about, you know, Rubio carrying forward the secret, and I'm talking about California State Senator Rubio, who was carrying forward the secret reform and since he stepped down to leave for Chevron, there's, his resignation puts that reform that many people were very excited about kind of in, in holding pattern. Um, briefings on, um, a variety of legislation that is coming forward on water bills. So I think that they're really important, uh, water bonds in particular, which will absolutely impact all of us. But the speaker was outstanding. Oh, I have to tell you this, there were twenty-one hundred bills introduced in the assembly in the first two months of the year. Twenty-one hundred, wow. And then you wonder why they have to spend so much money. But this guy's book, it's called Crazy Fornia by Lear Pierce. I went to hear him and he briefed on his, the history of how California got to where it is. And it's funny because he was able to make it so that you felt like laughing while you were crying. You know, the, the, it, it's so sad what's happened to us and how we got to where we are. And he talked about, um, the axis of power that's actually gotten us to where we are. And, and it really, when it lays out the problems in such a way, it's a lot easier for some people to listen to them that might not normally listen to those problems. I'm going to actually bring him to the city for another special event. He's willing to give the same briefing that he gave to Waco, which is outstanding, great slide presentation. And so, uh, when, when that happens, I'll make sure you, um, get noticed of that. But, but it's also, the book is a good read, it's a great history lesson. I have to report on this because there was a slight charge, I went to the face, Faith and Business Forum primarily because the speaker was the editor-in-chief of Gallup. of Gallup. And they have a very interesting way of researching and analyzing and helping leaders understand how populations are thinking. And it's so important for us as elected officials to be able to tap into polling information to understand, you know, how our decisions are being read by the public and why it's important to listen to the public that we're representing. So that was an outstanding briefing. I also went to, on March 21st, to wonderful Villa Park residence, Dennis and Phyllis Sant. You know, we have a large Mormon stake that's in this, in our community and they invited, I think they invited all the council members to attend the Savior of the World presentation that they do there. I've gone to that before. Probably about a quarter of the, you know, talent actually live in Villa Park. They had like 200-member choir surround sound all around you. The talent was unbelievable. It was a great show. It was so well done.